Dan, join me in the poll.
My pledge to you is to comply with the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Do we have any additions or edits to our agenda this morning?
We are under Commissioner Business going to remove item number six, planning a community development and consideration of accessory dwelling unit grant program that is not ready for your discussion. At this point, we will move that to the next B O C C meeting.
Thank you. Terry, do you have anything?
I do not.
Thank you. While the agenda will stand as amended constituent times, anybody in the room like to visit with their commissioners? Anybody online? Thank you. We'll go to County Clerk, Ms. Terry.
Good morning, Commissioner. Today, I have minutes for the August 2025 B O C C regular meeting. Are there any additions, changes, or additions?
I have none.
That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, under Commissioner Business, then, first item, Delta County Treasurer Lisa DeFolio with the Delta County Uncollectible Fund and Write-Offs.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Robbie.
Morning.
Good morning.
So, the uncollectibles report that was submitted to you in your packets does reflect a below the ten-year average write-off of $1,614.85 in taxes. The ten-year average is $4,245.09, so we did pretty well this year, I think. The first three items on your list are for possessory interest. There's nothing to disstrain in these cases and no existing mechanism at the state level to help us with those collections, so.
What did you say the ten-year average was?
$4,245.09.
Yeah, we're at 2,800. Questions for Treasurer Lisa DeFolio on this?
No questions. Good job. Thanks for your attention to detail. Thank you.
This is an action item, gentlemen. We have a resolution to cancel the uncollected property taxes. Do we have a paper copy of that handy?
For resolution number?
This would be 28.
28. I knew that Board of County Commissioners okayed the resolution canceling uncollected property taxes.
I will second the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
You can stay for the rest of the meeting if you want.
It'll be over by three. Thanks for that extra afternoon.
Who made the motion on that?
I did.
Go ahead, Robbie.
Okay, next, for your consideration, Public Health Director Jackie Davis regarding an appointment to the Board of Health.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. Is on or do we need to come to me here?
Red light's on.
Red light's on? Okay. All right, well, thank you for having me. The Delta County Board of Health currently has a vacancy due to Dr. Calderon's resignation as he's moving out of the area. The Board of County Commissioners is responsible for appointing a qualified Delta County resident to fill this, to fill his seat. The Board's bylaws states that the, to every extent practical, appointee should represent different sectors of the community, including personal or mental health, environmental health, or other public service areas. While not required by statute, Dr. Calderon did, just to so you know, represent District Three in the North Fork area. The current Board of Health membership is Board Attorney Chair, Commissioner Lane, our Vice Chair, which is Commissioner Craig Fuller, Dawn Chapman, who is District One, and Joe Rosenquist, who is at large, as an at-large member. I want to note that the Board members serve five-year terms. However, this appointment will be to complete the remainder of Dr. Calderon's term, which expires December of 2026. Members of the Board may be reappointed for up to do two additional full terms. I'm here today because the, again, the Board of County Commissioners makes this appointment, and I'm requesting to start the process to appoint a new member to the Board of Health.
Any questions from Jackie on this one?
Do you have somebody in mind?
Um, I, I have a few, at least one person in my mind that I think will probably apply, but as the process goes, as to, for any county seat, is to open it up to the community and then for the Board to go through and look at them, so. But there are a lot of qualified candidates in Delta County.
We do think you need to advertise, and let's get some good qualified folks with the Board of Health.
Absolutely.
That's very important for us.
Yeah. And I can work with Lindsay to get that hosted.
Thank you. And thank for all the hard work you've been putting in into your department.
Thank you.
And shows.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Is he actually gone yet, or is he, well, he won't be stopped this meeting, Robbie?
This, the last month's meeting was his last meeting.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Becky.
Lindsay, have we heard from C T S I? Okay, we will skip item number three right now until we hear from C T S I and move to Board's consideration and signature on a letter regarding state mandates.
I'll pick that up. It has come to our attention through the Commissioners of Mesa County and others, Garfield, that that are that our legislature has put so many unfunded mandates on the counties that it were becoming nothing but a piggy bank and funding their pet, their pet projects. I asked John Baird to help draft a letter with Robbie, starting to push back on that. And it'd be my recommendation that we sign this letter. It will go to Governor Polis, President of the Colorado Senate, James Coleman, and the Speaker of the House, Julie McCluskey, asking them to forego any further new unfunded mandates and to understand that any new unfunded mandates, it's possible we would consider these optional under C R S 291304.51. So is there any questions on this one, gentlemen?
No, I think it's about time that it's brought to the state legislature's attention due to the amount of money that is involved in some of these projects, which just makes it fiscal irresponsible. Plus, where is the money going to come from? How are we going to raise that money to monitor whatever various programs that they've made a law to govern? But yeah, I think it's a very good thing that we submit this letter.
I would agree. In consideration of the person that used to sit in this chair for the last eight years, every time I would run into Dawn on the street or sit down for a meal together, I would ask him how things were going, and he would say, well, things are going pretty good, except for they keep having these unfunded mandates out. It's driving me crazy, so. In honor or recognition of his eight years trying to battle against this, I think it's high time we get this thing signed and sent off. And like you Thatcher famously said many years ago, the problem with socialism is eventually you run out of other people's money. So I believe we've reached that crossroads a while ago, but I'm 100% behind this. And so with no further ado, I would make a motion that we sign this letter, we send it off to Governor Polis, President Coleman, and Speaker McCluskey post haste.
And I would just insert that you would join the other counties who are also submitting this joint letter.
Absolutely. Do we have any idea how many that is? Mesa County is keeping track, but.
Yeah, I don't know the actual number, but it does include several bipartisan counties and Eastern Plains counties.
I second the motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen. I will make sure Mesa County gets a copy of this.
Here's a clear copy as well, just to roll a couple. If you'll just leave both of them, then Terry will. Okay.
Frank, I'd like to get a copy of these.
Okay. All right, now we'll go back to C T S I, their presentation. Dana is online, remote, to present the five-year loss analysis for Delta County. So thank you very much for being online with us.
Good morning, Commissioners in Delta County. Thanks for giving me a little bit of time this morning. I tried to chime in, but I was muted. So I couldn't, it, it wouldn't let me unmute there. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay, so I won't take a ton of time this morning, but it's that time of year when C T S I Loss Control meets with the Board of County Commissioners. Just to kind of give a quick check-in, just to remind you that C T S I, we are your insurance carrier. We're owned and operated by the counties of Colorado to provide insurance coverages for, I believe we're close, we're 50 of the 64 counties. We are a pool. We're not similar to the other insurance companies out there because essentially it's the counties that, that put their contributions in, and then they, they actually turn out at the end of the year. Any of the funds that are set above the surplus, those funds go back to the county members in form of pool distributions. And so to give you an example of that, last year, we gave back out of our workers' comp pool $4 million back to our county members. And then out of the cap pool, the, the property casualty auto liability sheriff liability pool, we gave back over $500,000 to the pool members. And then your contributions sit in an account. It doesn't just sit there. It earns interest. And we were able to give back over $975,000 back to the county members for, for that. So what did that do for Delta County? For Delta County of that $4 million, you got back $111,580 out of the $500, or $500,000. You got back $13,966. And then of the 975,000 in interest, you got back $17,284 for a grand total of $142,830. I'm looking at your, your loss ratios for the, for the last year in your, in your C W C P. You're at a .92 for your loss ratio, which is the lowest tier. That's great. And then for our, the cap side, you're at a .795, which is the second to the lowest. So we do have a little bit of room to, to improve on that aspect. I do like to just briefly start off with how are we doing right now mid-year of 2025 with the county and the county losses? And that's what I have pulled up right now. It's so far you've had three claims for two bucks, or two bucks. That's great. Uh, the two bucks is just the, the reserve that's set up to admit, but basically those are zero-dollar claims. And they don't, they, they don't amount to a hill of beans on anything other than the fact that, you know, there's no real trends here. And so that's a positive of how we're finishing out or at mid-year, how we're doing. So if we keep this trajectory, I really like where we're going because this is where we're at right now. On the, on, as opposed to the pool, as a whole, the pool is at mid-year sitting at 315 claims for $3,892, or I'm sorry, $3,892,668 with an average cost of $12,358. And as you can see, we've had an uptick of fires. Over the last two years, we've had several fires. As a matter of fact, we had a fire out in Montrose last week where there were some oily rags left in a shop trash can. And those oily rags spontaneously combusted, didn't do a ton of damage, but definitely still affected operations from that standpoint. So a little bit of safety and C T S I Loss Control has been going around and starting to do some facility audits with counties as well. That being said, our, our biggest exposure is the auto liability side because auto claims can affect not only the auto, it can also affect property, and it can also affect the workers' comp as well. So it can have a trifecta from that standpoint. When we look at our work comp side of the house, mid-year, we've had 10 claims for $42,213. No real trends that we're seeing here at this point in the, in the year. So overall, relatively low, low exposure considering what, what has been transpiring throughout the rest of the pool, which we're sitting at 326 claims for $2,746,761 with our average cost right now is $8,429. And then when, when we look, we still, we still have our slips, trips, and falls, but the inmate-related claims are really starting to skyrocket up and start to, starting to really have an uptick in, in our, our people that are incarcerated are not getting any gentler, so to speak. They're, they're getting a little more aggressive, a little more emboldened, and definitely having an effect on our corrections officers and deputies. Any questions on the mid-year, kind of how we're sitting right now?
Questions, Commissioners?
I have none.
Dana, no, no questions here. Just a comment. It's good to see our trajectory at mid-year is, is actually really good.
It, it, it does look really good. And when we, when we switch over and look at how did we finish last year? So I like to kind of go backwards before we get to our five-year trend. So you all can see, are we gaining? Are we staying stable, or are we creating new trends as we look at this? As, as you can see on the graph here, this is for the year-end of 2024, so just, just one-year snapshot. And you can see, we had a slight uptick here, but I believe if we keep where we're going now in the cap side of the house with only $2 in claims, knock on wood, everybody, this, this, this is going to drop back down here, and we have one more year until 2021 drops off. But we do have a fairly high year in 2020 that'll drop off next year as well. So that's a real, real positive is that we're replacing these higher years with these lower years in our, in our graph. So that we're, Delta County's sitting pretty good from that standpoint. So as I said last year, this report was ran from January 1st of 2024 to December 31st of 2024. So it doesn't reflect any changes of claims that have occurred since the, since December 31st of '24. But it's a good snapshot that we, we only had 17 claims last year for $120,444. So looking at where we're at now, mid-year, three, three, three claims for two bucks, that's, that's fantastic. So I like this trend. I like where we're going in there. Auto, auto liability has been the biggest exposure. And since then, we did, we did some training in Delta County as well with, with Siri and Loss Control this year. We did some flagging training as well. Certainly, we would like to get that auto and defensive driving classes still set up for county drivers on a regular basis. It, it, it's really shown, shown a positive for the counties that have done this. And I wanted to point out when we look at the pool as a whole, vehicle backing is still, it's still a driver and literally in, in a cost driver for not only the counties and pool members, but it's something that's easily preventable. And in 2023, 17% of all auto-related cap claims were as a result of backing. C T S I Loss Control really started putting an emphasis on this and working with the counties, and they've been taking us up on that defensive driving class as well. And we have now dropped that down to 7% in 2024 of all of the claims is 7%. So we've had a 10% improvement on just backing. That's low-hanging fruit. That helps the pool as a whole, and ultimately you as members keep those costs and start to drive those costs down as a whole.
We hope to see that reflected in the premiums, too.
Well, the best insurance advice I can give you, Commissioners, is that you buy the promise, don't use the product. And that's the, that's the way to keep the cost down overall. And, and you can take that and use that on the personal side, too. So moving into the work comp of last year, and you can kind of see a similar trajectory here. We had a little bit of an uptick, and now we've kind of dropped back down a little bit for 2024 and 2023, so it's kind of holding steady there. We had a total of 27 claims for $56,616. A big trend that, that we had here was the, the exposure, the exposure to disease and, and kind of that bloodborne pathogen aspect that came out of the social services area. And I think that they take some, taken some steps to reduce the, the potential of recurrence in there. Luckily, those were all the zero-dollar claims. Zero-dollar claims don't hurt the county at all in the premium calculations or things like that. But what it does do is it helps me as your loss control consultant to look for any trends that might be coming in and look for areas that we can step in and help out the county, whether that's with policy revisions or training, those type of things. So any questions on last year, how we, how we kind of finished out last year before we move into the five-year?
Any questions, Commissioners?
I don't think so.
All right.
Dana, we're on a real tight time schedule here, so we need to move through this kind of quickly.
All right, I will do that. We already talked about the graphs, so I won't, I won't go into the graphs. But in the last five years, Delta County had 61 claims for $1,088,033 with our average cost of $17,837. Our top five frequency and severity by department came out of the law enforcement. Now, keep in mind, administration does not mean on the cap side. It doesn't mean that that's your county admin staff. Administration is also your facilities, your buildings, your property. So that, that could be property damage as well. So top three for the frequency is law enforcement, buildings and property in Roden Bridge. On the severity side, law enforcement, administration, and district attorneys. Then we break it down by what type of claims were they in the top five? You can see here in the last five years, the vehicle-related claims are definitely the highest frequency driver. And then the, in the severity side, we, we had a fatality, some constitutional violations. But look over here with the vehicles aspects, those quickly jump up there as well as a lost cost driver. So the auto, auto side of the house is something to be concerned with. Any questions on the cap?
No, we're good, Dana. Keep moving.
I will keep truckin'. All right, we'll jump right back into the work comp. We already went through that graph. Over the last five years, we had 68 claims for $476,945 with our average cost of $7,014. That's, when we looked at that mid-year, we're, we're, we're a little higher than that, but given the fact of the cost of medical care, that's, that's to be seen as those increases moving forward. Top five frequency and severity for the departments is the law enforcement, admin staff, and that, that would include your health department, your social services as well as, as the top three departments. And then your top three in severity, Roden Bridge, law enforcement, that is standard. We see those two departments because of the physical demands of the job. They jump back and forth all the time. And then from the, from the pool itself, you can see slips and falls and vehicle-related incidences are the top five severities. On the, I'm, I'm sorry, that, this is on the, on the type of claims for the counties. Slips and falls, vehicle loss of control, there's that dual exposure that I was talking about. And then the vehicles on ice. So people are getting hurt in those vehicle incidences as well, having a double impact and a double exposure. In terms of the number of claims over the last five years for the pool, 3,903 dollar, or 3,903 claims for $30,551,477 with our average cost of $7,828. So Delta County's cost in five years is right there with the rest of the pool. So nothing, nothing to really speak of, of that aspect to, to come to fruition from that. So any questions on the five-year?
Thanks, Commissioners. I have none.
All right. And then just the last question I have for you, Commissioners, is there anything else I can be doing for you in the, in the county as your loss control consultant specialist assigned to the county? And we're, we're here as a resource for you and your staff.
Certainly, we appreciate C T S I. Their technical advice has been invaluable with some of the policies regarding family and that. We will concentrate on that defensive driving and the, and the backing up. We certainly know, especially at our landfill, we've had some, some issues there. So we will work on that and, and get you out this winter when it's a little quieter. So I appreciate that.
All right. Well, thank you. You guys have been a pleasure to work with over the last year, too. So thank you.
Thanks, Dana. Appreciate it. We'll see you this winter. Very good.
Okay, it is almost nine o'clock. I would ask that Chris Stewart come forward with some presentations for the LaRue Fire.
Good morning, Commissioner Robbie.
Good morning, Chris.
I, I know we kind of touched on this at the last meeting, but just the LaRue Fires wrapped up, and we wanted to take a few minutes to recognize staff across various departments to help contribute to the success of the LaRue Fire. I know most of these people are going to say it was their, doing their daily job and what they do, but still nice to give them some recognition. The Caro Incident Management Team from Division of Fire Prevention and Control gave us some certificates to present to some staff. And then on behalf of emergency management, I would like to recognize other departments and staff as well for their roles. So I'll kind of run through the list of who was instrumental in the help for the fire, and then we have some certificates for the departments, and if we can do a group photo at the end. And then we have some certificates for the departments, and if we can do a group photo at the end. And hopefully I don't miss anybody. I know, uh, we asked as many people as could be here today to be here. So, um, so for Roden Bridge, District Two and District Three were instrumental. Um, Foreman Dave Howard, uh, Foreman John Allen and Operator Ted Cunningham is who ran the dozer, but Dave and John facilitated moving equipment and barriers. Shane Carpenter was one of the operators to help move the dozer up there. And of course, Scott Sheets, our Public Works Director, uh, working with comms and facilitating, making sure everything was working with the dozer and equipment. Uh, a big help, uh, to the Sheriff's Office was our Delta County Search and Rescue Team. Uh, after, on Monday, Sheriff Taylor put out the call to the search and rescue volunteers to help man the road closure there at thirty-one hundred in Redlands Mesa Road to keep unauthorized people out of the fire area, uh, keep it authorized personnel only. And the search and rescue volunteer stepped up to man that for a couple of days around the clock. So huge appreciation goes out to them. Um, I know Carrie's not here today, she's on PTO, but uh, Carrie Durco with Delta County GIS, helping not only the incident management team, but also emergency management with mapping and alerts and stuff to help keep the public informed and critical maps for the incident management team on hazards and different layers and stuff that we have on GIS. Uh, she also worked with Esri, the cert, building new features for future incidents so that we can be better prepared. Build, Delta County Building and Grounds, um, the staff at the fairgrounds and our cleaning custodians. Um, as Robbie alluded to at the last meeting, they flipped. The, this fire started the day after County Fair ended, and Heritage Hall was still set up for, uh, Delta County Fair, and they broke down and cleaned up Heritage Hall in record time, which is no small feat. Um, so Brian Ball, Sarah Millholland, Ryan Bates, Russ Cooper, uh, and Lisa Moss for their assistance with that. And then also just keeping the, anything that the incident management team needed during their time at Heritage Hall for that week. Um, the Sheriff's Office, obviously a critical part of this response, starting with dispatch. Um, they fielded all the calls, nine-one-one, non-emergency calls that came in when the fire started, then throughout the incident with people asking about, hey, do you know there's a fire? I don't know how many times we get that phone call in the dispatch, so, um, if I don't miss any of the dispatchers, but Danielle Kelso, Katie Barker, and Carly Pierce were just three of them that were working on those first few days of the fire, but obviously the entire dispatch team receives recognition. Um, our patrol division, Sergeant Clymer, Deputy Nguyen, Deputy Bradbury, Deputy Davis, Deputy Rubel, Sergeant Ramesh and Deputy Galvin were instrumental in the first hours of doing the, um, evacuations at two o'clock in the morning on August fourth, and then Sergeant Ramesh and Deputy Galvin manned the roadblock until we could get search and rescue in place. Our public health team, Delta County Public Health Director David, Jackie Davis, EPR Coordinator Shirley Tato, Environmental Health Director Sam Treble, and entire public health team, including their summer intern Braden Alberg, helped with public messaging, our Joint Information Center, um, keeping the public informed about smoke, other health challenges during the fire. Um, our IT department, John Lotta, Alex Burton and Tina Charland. Anything that we needed to keep the incident going, we moved operations up to the Norfolk Annex. They helped us get a hotline setup at the Annex. Uh, worked with GIS to get maps stood up, so, um, they pivoted on the fly as well to get us anything that we needed. And then obviously, uh, thank you to the administration team, Robbie, the commissioners and Lindsay for being there. Robbie was at every briefing with us in the morning, even though you were on vacation, Commissioner Coons, you were still checking in, offering assistance, great. You came up to evacuation point and stuff, and Commissioner Lane and Lindsay with your PIO assistance. So thank you to everyone, and we have some certificates to hand out over here. Just want me to call them up there?
Sure, and we're going to do a photo. Where do you want us, Lindsay? Photo, this was kind of a large group. Going up here, folks. Hey, hold on, Andrew. One of the coaches, Dr. Ray, that goes up, says, oh, triple duty, may have, have this man scooped in. I think he's up somewhere.
Lindsay in here. I can send it to you, too. All right.
And it's worth noting that if it hadn't been for the quick and, and very professional response of our teams, we can be facing the same thing meet and facing. We really appreciate working guys, keep us safe and Delta County. And if you haven't, Chris, stay in, if you haven't had a chance to sign in, please do. Chris, you're still on deck. As you know. As far as the bids for the access control.
I've been into that now.
But Chris, thank you for doing that recognition of those folks.
You're welcome.
Very worthwhile.
And thank you personally. Yeah, you're the one that kind of spearheads this whole thing. So you and Mindy are, you forget to mention Chris and Mindy.
Right, so Chris spent twenty-four hours for a week on duty, so in addition to his sixteen-hour day jobs.
How many hours is that all?
Yeah.
There isn't a big check. Just a lot of hours.
Yeah.
Um, so the next item, um, so a while back, I presented to you guys the IGA between Delta County and San Miguel County. We've been applying to the Homeland Security Grant for years. It's a grant through FEMA. Um, and one of the projects back in twenty twenty-two, we put in a funding request to continue expansion of our access control program here at the campus. Uh, we got an increase, um, through the Regional Board, which is Emergency Managers for each of the counties in the West Region. Um, and we had fifty-six thousand, uh, three hundred and forty-four dollars, I believe, allocated to us through the grant. And then we put in fifty thousand dollars in capital funds to try and get access control completed this year. Um, there are various, there were three buildings, the brown buildings, CSU extension, and the former Delta PD building that did not have any access control on them. And then several buildings that needed some more expansion to the front doors and other doors that we've identified as security concerns. Um, so we went out to bid, we did a bid process through San Miguel because they're the fiscal agent. Uh, those bids came back in June, um, a hundred thousand dollars over budget, so we no-bid that. RP, re-scoped it, took out some of the buildings. Uh, we really reduced it and put it out again in July, um, and that closed August eighth. Uh, working with San Miguel on that bid proposal, um, and working with John Bear in his office on this. So we received three bids. Basically, the, this proposal is to add access control to the brown building. Um, three more doors and public health, uh, the front doors here at the administration building. Um, and some doors up at the Norfolk Annex, um, a couple of doors over in the courthouse. Um, and two at the Sheriff's Office as well that were identified as being needed. Um, so not a huge project, but not small by any means either. So we put that out. These are the three teams that, uh, three companies that bid. Now, we, the, one of the bid, bids came back missing a lot of the required forms, so I determined that packet to be non-complete. So that really left us two, and one is significantly over budget. Um, and that leaves Bearcom, which is the company that is currently servicing our access control and who we're used to. Um, they came in just under budget. So we, our total budget is a hundred fifteen thousand between our capital and the FEMA grant. They came in a hundred fourteen thousand, seven, seventy-four, twenty-two. Um, so, uh, even though this is the majority of the funding is coming from San Miguel to the grant through San Miguel County, speaking with John, since we're the ultimate recipient of the entire hundred fifteen thousand dollars in value, and that's over the fifty thousand dollar RFP threshold, that's why I'm bringing this to you guys today to, and we have fifty thousand in capital going into this project and to get the board's, um, recommendation. And then tomorrow, I'll present this to the San Miguel County Board to officially award the RFP as well per their fiscal, uh, policies for the grants.
Questions for Chris on this access control RFP?
So you've got nothing in there that, for the PD building, right? That was already deleted?
Correct. That'll be for twenty twenty-six, so.
And the funds go to San Miguel, and San Miguel disperses them to Delta County?
So it's a pass-through grant, a reimbursement grant. So San Miguel will pay the invoice to the vendor, and then they'll turn in the reimbursement request to um, the state, and they'll get paid back by FEMA. And they'll actually handle all the invoicing for this, and they'll invoice us for our share of the, um, which is just under fifty thousand for our share. And then they'll just, it's just cleaner that way than trying to split invoices, and some come to us, some go to them, so.
What's the timeframe on this? When does it have to be completed by?
December fifteenth. And Bearcom's paperwork did align with that timeline. We got a grant extension. Originally, the grant was supposed to be expended by August thirtieth. Um, and we applied for and got an extension to put us through December fifteenth, just to close out the books on this year and stuff, so.
And Bearcom is the one you're recommending?
It is. And that's who we've been utilizing and who's been doing all the installs on our system to date, so.
Any other questions? I have none. What would be the will of the board here?
Why move that we approved the bid for the grant, San Miguel County being the fiscal agent? Uh, the total bid for the project's one hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-two cents being awarded to Bearcom.
I will second that motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chris, thanks for your hard work on this one, too.
This is
This is going round and round.
It's taken a lot of hours of FEMA paperwork. Um, Sheriff had asked me if it was worth it, and I said I put too much time and effort in the dealing with FEMA to not see this one through, so. So next year, there shouldn't be a FEMA grant, so hopefully it'll be a lot less headache, but I will present this to um, San Miguel tomorrow, and then we can, uh, I'm working with John to get the contract finalized after this meeting, and then hopefully we can get install starts soon.
Well, thanks for sticking with it.
You're welcome.
Okay, next for your consideration is to ratify the warrants.
Why move that we approve the warrants from the various funds by warrant numbers one, five, five, zero, four, five through one, five, five, two, six, nine, and ACH transaction one, one, four, four, dash, one, 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 eight, six from July first, twenty twenty-five through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five totaling nine hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents in accounts payable and one million, nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-four cents in monthly county human services and health department, July twenty twenty-five payroll per items budgeted and approved per Delta County policy. Yes, and authorize the chair.
I will second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, next, Lindsay will review your calendar.
Good morning.
Meeting after our Board of County Commissioners meeting, there is a work session with the Grand Beast and Lord Council at one PM. And then one
Wait, uh, do we do have, today, planning will be continued through the regular meeting uh, for the Davis. So we will need to reschedule that. That planning had asked for extended time to the three planning.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we'll work with those guys to reschedule that. Correct. So we'll have Board of Health at three thirty.
Yeah, so that'll pick up the Okay. Um, so we'll have the Board of Health at three thirty, um, and then on August twenty-second at seven thirty, we have CCI Western District meeting. That will be held at this road. Um, on August twenty-sixth, uh, there is the rightful ED summit at nine AM to three PM. August twenty-seventh, there is a work session with the Sheriff's Department at ten AM. August twenty-seventh, Delta Health and Delta County Work Session at three PM, that is at Delta Health. August twenty-seventh, Planning Commission, or excuse me. Um, August twenty-eighth, in the Regional Ten Board and Executive Committee meeting. At twelve PM.
What do you say, Lindsay?
September twenty-second will be our next regularly scheduled Board of County Commissioners meeting at eight AM. September second at six PM is a Republican Party meeting. September fifth through September sixth is the Club Twenty Fall Conference. September tenth at ten AM is the CEU. Um, September eleventh at ten to two PM is the municipal quarterly meeting. September twelfth is the, uh, twenty twenty-five Delta County Quarterly Economic Update with Nathan Perry, yes, at AM. Tickets are still available to that if the public is interested in it. September sixteenth will be our next Board of County Commissioners meeting. Beginning of thirty. September sixteenth, three thirty is Board of Health meeting. September seventeenth at nine AM is the AGNC, the Backboard meeting. September twenty-second, three is a one Delta County Board meeting. Is a one Delta County Board meeting. September twenty-fourth, we have coffee with a commish, a non-count, being Crawford. Lazy J will begin at seven thirty. Community is welcome to attend. Coffee's on Wendell. September twenty-fourth. Excuse me there. Eight, September twenty-fifth, there's another Region Ten Board and Executive Committee meeting. Begins at twelve. That looks like it. And she's long sent.
Uh, on that September twenty-fifth at five thirty to nine thirty, very emergency management workshop or meeting of some sort? It's, it's on the thing here. I think September twenty-fourth.
Yes, that's the E T S M one thousand two training. Um, disaster manning overview for what's been on the officials. Starting at five thirty.
Yeah, it's in the calendar.
Okay.
The law will wait till he's.
Okay. Something else, yeah. Oh, August twenty-eighth, there's a invite from, was that from Jeff or Riley's? Okay, I don't know.
Yeah.
Riley Scott?
Yeah, that's not a commissioner thing, though, to put on our calendar.
But it would be for the public notice if there's more than two of you that will be attending.
Think he signed up, I'm probably gonna go.
What?
Uh, it's a, just a tour of, uh, a couple of different farms. One was, uh, Chabogs up in Cedar Edge, the other one we've got here.
Probably that's the only one I'll be at.
The fog one?
Yeah. Okay.
I'll get this back for it.
Okay.
Anything else, commissioners, for the joint scheduling?
No.
I think I just emailed the two of them and it copied you, so you're welcome.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, um, our website is a little different on the home page. It is a little easier to read our community event, kind of the public meetings. So when you're on there, please just take a minute to look at home page and look through our.
Done?
All done.
Thank you.
We've got four jail reports, uh, go through here for the record. Uh, Delta County Detention Facility Population Count Report for Monday, July twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five. Male inmates, county jail thirty, female inmates, county jail seven. Male inmates, Department of Corrections, one, female inmates, Department of Corrections, one, total thirty-nine. Average daily inmate population for twenty-one July through twenty-eight July was forty-four point eight zero. For Monday, August fourth, twenty twenty-five, male inmates, forty-one, female inmates, four. Male inmates, Department of Corrections, two. Female inmates, Department of Corrections, two, total forty-nine. Average daily inmate population for the week of twenty-eight July through August four was forty-eight point nine five. For Monday, August eleventh, twenty twenty-five, male inmates, county jail thirty-eight, female inmates, county jail three. Male inmates, Department of Corrections, three, female inmates, Department of Corrections, two, total forty-six. Average daily inmate population for the week of August four through August eleven was fifty-eight point three six. For Tuesday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, male inmates, county jail forty-one, female inmates, county jail one. Male inmates, Department of Corrections, two, female inmates, Department of Corrections, one, total forty-five. The average daily inmate population for the week of August eleven through August eighteen, fifty-two point two nine. Is there anything else to come before the board commissioners?
Not at this time.
Very. Very good. It is nine twenty-five. We will recess till ten A M for planning. This is the August nineteenth, um, Delta County Board of County Commissioners meeting here at planning. We have three contentious, uh, projects we're going to review today. First will be, uh, the proposed Hawk, uh, wedding venue. Second will be the Rock, uh, investment here in Delta. And the third will be the Davis wedding venue on Rogers Mesa. We expect these to take well over an hour per. So if you're here for any of the other two, you do have some time. Uh, it is my request of this group today to be respectful to each other. We are still neighbors, we're still Delta County. We're better than, than some of the others we've seen elsewhere. And I hope we can maintain a standard at the quorum here that means something to us as a community. So having said all that, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Gardner, um, Sean.
The first project is Project twenty-four sixty-three Hawk. The, to consider a conditional use permit for an event venue. Uh, the Hawk event venue application was received in September fourth last year. It was classified as an event venue according to the Land Use Code, which requires a limited use permit with notice. It was elevated to a conditional use permit due to potential material impacts on neighboring properties or public resources. Uh, we received a number of, um, comments from neighbors concerning, uh, these potential impacts. And so, uh, and also there was a platinum restriction on the, uh, plat for the property. Regarding the, um, the water supply for the venue. So for these reasons, it was elevated to condition use permit. Uh, the location of the property is on approximately sixty-three acre parcel, about, uh, three miles northeasterly of Crawford. At the address, the residence on the property is addressed to forty-three, forty-four, zero Cottonwood Creek Drive or Road. Um, it's in the eight twenty zone. This here is a picture of the site plan. The venue consists of a probably for the birth with barn. Where we went, for events such as weddings, family reunions, baby showers, birthday parties, company parties, et cetera. Inside the barn, there's a prep, uh, warming kitchen or bathrooms. Uh, there's an outdoor, uh, dance floor with large lawn area for gathering. And there's a parking lot that's planned for the facility that will have a hundred and three spaces. Um, there is a, there has been submitted and, uh, approved engineered septic design for the barn. Has not yet been installed. It's awaiting possible approval for the permit to do the installation. The applicants are also working with county engineering on access for the barn, venue. Um, these are, uh, matters that are outlining the conditions of draft conditions of approval. Regarding their business plan or operational plan, next one. Now, the proposed hours, uh, according to the business plan, were ten A M to twelve thirty A M. Friday through Sunday at ten A M to eleven P M, Monday through Thursday. At the P T hearing, we felt like that that was not very clear, uh. And A M to twelve thirty A M, um, goes into the next day. So in the conditions of approval, we amended that and, uh. It for, for ten A M Friday to twelve thirty A M Saturday, ten A M Saturday to twelve thirty A M Sunday. And then ten A M to eleven P M, Sunday through Thursday. So that's in, uh, condition number four, I would. Uh, the max capacity for the venue is two hundred and fifty people. Again, the parking space is a hundred and three spaces for those are going to be handicapped. And their goal is to eventually host thirty-five events per year. There are no overnight accommodations on at the facility. And the owners will not be providing food or beverage. Uh, catering or food trucks are the responsibility of the guest vehicles. So are beverages, including alcoholic beverages. They have included also in their, uh, business plan, a fire mitigation plan. Basically, they removed all the large trees and shrubs within fifty feet of the building. The building would be surrounded by gravel or irrigated lawn. There is a designated smoking area. Their contract prohibits open fire pyrotechnics or candles. And they, um, have three exit doors clearly marked and they'll be working with the proper fire chief. Disagreed to help them to place fire extinguishers and smoke alarms and. Also the designated smoking area. They also included an emergency plan, uh, the emergency plan includes plans for birthday kits and cleanup procedures for public health concerns. Um, they have an emergency response communication procedures thought out. And, um, they've also designed access for, um, evacuation of people inside the facility. And also access, um, for emergency vehicles. And these have all been reviewed also by. So, uh, both the fire mitigation and emergency plans are contained in the business plan with. And, uh, that's referenced in condition number one, for the draft conditions of approval. In regard to the noise mitigation. Um, their plan is that music will be kept to state regulatory levels, uh, for, um. Of noise following the state statute, uh, for a commercial venue, which, uh, requires that, uh. Noise not exceed sixty decibels from seven A M to seven P M. And this is measured twenty-five feet from boundary lines. Um, and not exceed fifty-five decibels from seven P M to seven A M. I will note that, uh, one of the neighbors believes that the venue should be classified as residential versus commercial. Which would reduce the decibel levels in the daytime and in the evening by five decibels. So that's something for your consideration when I mention the conditions of approval. That's for condition number two. Uh, there is a dance floor, uh, outside the barn venue. It's been positioned on the east side of the building between the, uh, a hillside in the barn. Um, purposefully to attempt to shield. Noise that come from the dance floor from reaching out to neighbor, neighboring properties. On the next slide, there's, uh. There's a map here of basically the neighboring properties and their distances from the venue. Neighbors range from about seven hundred and fifty-six feet to eight, one thousand eight hundred and ninety-five feet away from the venue. In the conditions of approval, you'll see that we've asked the, the venue owner to keep a decibel log during events. Not a lot of specificity around how that's to be done, but it was just an attempt to. You know, um, have some kind of requirement that some sort of noise measuring happen during events. And be kept in the log and would be reviewed at the end of every year. The distance, uh, from the homes of the neighbors, uh, again, in, in the special event standards in the land use code. It says the amplified noise shall not operate outdoors between hours of nine P M of one day and eight A M of the next day or ten P M. On Friday or Saturday, unless there is a maximum of six hundred feet from a neighboring residence. So all neighboring residences are further than six hundred feet from the venue. Um, regarding the traffic, um, there was a traffic impact study, uh, conducted and determined the project will not increase the existing average. Daily volumes, daily trip volumes of the immediate roadway network by more than twenty percent. And C dot, uh, wedding venue trip generation, just to know, uses seventy-five percent of the venue capacity for calculating the average daily trip. Calculations. There was a lot of concern about, there is a lot of concern about dust, um, that be generated on Cottonwood Creek Road. So the county engineer, uh, took note of that, talked with the road and bridge foreman. And both of them are recommending an annual road bond in the amount of seven thousand, five hundred dollars to cover. Seventy-five percent of the cost of the application of mag chloride. The Cottonwood Creek Road, starting from forty-two hundred road to the venue access point. And every five years, the bond amount will be updated pursuant to consumer price index. So that's, uh, proposed as condition eleven in the draft condition of approval. Last item that I want to present to you, the water supply. This has been. Probably the biggest challenge to this project, you know, right from the start. Water supply is an issue, um, because of the platinum restriction on the property's most recent plat, which states. That any further development on any lot will require the purchase. Of additional water caps and septic systems and utilities must be constructed.
Hang on just a second, Sean.
Yeah.
Said everybody, please silence their cell phones. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Sean.
So the platinum restriction reads, any further development on any lot will require the purchase of additional water caps. And septic systems and utilities must be constructed upon each lot and said restriction must be removed by formal action for county commissioners. So Mad Dog Water Company serves the home that's on the property with domestic water, but does not issue commercial permits and will not permit the venue. The developers have proposed two supply sources for water for the venue. One is a commercial well, um, for which they have a permit to drill on an adjacent parcel that they own. And the other is a commercial tap, tied by Dyche Water Company, Domestic Water Company, and they have a letter. Meaning that, that, that they will sell them that tap and allow them to use it specifically for the event venues. So they're proposing to either use that domestic water tap. It's for commercial use for the venue, uh, from Dyche Water Company or the well. And, uh, either haul it in, in both cases, the well or the tap, uh, to a cistern that would supply the venue. Or potentially pipe it from the well that's on the adjacent property. So those are the two proposed water supply sources. Um, the, with regard to the well, Department of Natural Resources has issued the well permit for commercial purposes. And does not have an issue with it being hauled to a nearby cistern. And again, with regard to the water tap, Dyche Water Company's provided a letter agreeing to sell a commercial tap to the applicant specifically for the event venue. Regarding the language in the land use code or cisterns. The specific language regarding cisterns in land use code. Says that cisterns may be allowed if the property is located within the service area of a purveyor and the purveyor agrees to allow a cistern. Dyche Water Company's, uh, service area is, according to the division of, uh, or Department of Natural Resources. It's whatever the water company, wherever the water company wants to supply water to. And as they've stated very clearly in their letter, that they understand that this water tap is commercial tap. They could be providing for that event venue, then that would be in their service area according to them. Cisterns, uh, may be allowed where there is a permitted onsite water source. Um, so. The Department of Natural Resources provided a letter, uh, with regard to the well permit. And said that they consulted with their Denver office and agreed that is in accordance with the regulations that water from the exempt commercial well. Can be used on a different parcel than the one where the well is located, so long as it is only used for the purposes allowed by the permit. So staff found that either proposed solution meets the requirements of land use code and re, and satisfies the plat restriction. So condition number seven requires applicant to provide adequate water supply that's sufficient in terms of quality, quantity, and dependability. And the evidence of the water supply must be approved by the Delta County Public Health. So with all that said, I can go to the draft conditions of approval. All that also, this here kind of indicates where that adjacent parcel is. It's approximately nineteen hundred feet away where the, um, proposed well site would be, just to kind of create an idea. Go ahead to the draft conditions approval.
Do you have any questions, commissioners? Do you have any questions, commissioners? Don't you have?
All right. Condition number one, project twenty-four zero six three is approved for an event venue. They can host up to thirty-five events in one calendar year with the max capacity being two hundred and fifty people at the property located at forty-three, four, four, zero, Cottonwood Creek Road. Operations shall be in accordance with the approved plans and supplemental documentation to the satisfaction of the Director of Community Development, including but not limited to the business plans, which include all the things that are written, and the site plan. Any significant modification shall require an amendment to be considered by the planning commission and board of governors. Condition number two, this is a condition that was added after a PC hearing. At the hearing, the applicant had stated that it was not their intention to host music festivals or concerts and express the willingness for this to be made a condition. One neighbor in particular requested that this be considered a condition, so it's here for your consideration. No outdoor music festivals or concert events will be permitted at the venue. Number three, plants identified through the Colorado Noxious Weed Act and the Delta County Noxious Weed List as desirable and designated for management within the county shall be removed. Number four, approved hours of operation are from ten AM Friday to twelve thirty AM Saturday, ten AM Saturday to twelve thirty AM Sunday, and ten AM to eleven PM, Sunday through Thursday. This includes setup and teardown. Music will be turned off and moved inside at ten PM. On-site overnight camping is prohibited. So like I mentioned before, the PC amended these proposed business hours from the applicant and to make it more explicit days and hours for intended. Number five, outdoor lighting shall be fitted or shielded so as to not cast light or glare onto adjacent properties or upwards in a manner that the roof tonight's sky. Number six, the operation shall not exceed noise thresholds set by the Colorado statute, maximum visible noise levels, which limits commercial use to a sound level of sixty decibels during the hours of seven AM to seven PM and fifty-five decibels during the hours of seven PM to seven AM at twenty-five feet from the property boundary. The owner shall maintain the decibel log that is approved by county planning. Like I mentioned, when a neighbor requested it, there'd be a consideration of not classifying it as commercial, but rather residential, which would lower the decibels by five. Number seven, prior to operations, the owner shall provide evidence of adequate water supply that's sufficient in terms of quality, quantity, and dependability. Evidence of the water supply should be, must be approved by Delta County Public Health. Number eight, prior to operations, the owner shall obtain final approval on an engineered onsite water wastewater treatment system permit for the event venue. Nine, prior to operations, the owner shall obtain approval from the county engineer for the venue access. Ten, prior to operations, the owner shall obtain site construction approval according to the final approved site plan from county planning. Number eleven, there shall be an annual road bond in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars to cover seventy-five percent of the cost of the application of mag chloride to Cottonwood Creek Road, starting from forty-two hundred Road to the venue access point. Every five years, the bond amount will be updated pursuant to consumer price index. Number twelve, the owner shall submit an annual report to the county by January fifteenth of each year to include the number of events held, the number of attendees, review of decibel logs, responses to any complaints, any proposed changes to operations or site plans to ensure compliance with the permit. This will also include an annual site visit to review the property in conditions of the permit issue. And number thirteen, the venue owner shall comply with all of Colorado state liquor laws. Any questions?
Questions for Sean on this one?
Do not have any questions?
No, it's time.
Is there, who's speaking for Hawk Ranch on this one? Robert, is there anything you'd like to add or?
Um, there is.
Clarify. Would please introduce yourself and where you live.
You're gonna leave me by myself again. That's what they do every time until, see, and then they come with you. Right. The light's on, it's on, right? Just a couple of things that we, I think we had talked about that I think are hard to put in the, I think some of them are in the business plan, but I just wanted to go over. First of all, the overall, I feel like this is.
Robert, please introduce.
Oh, I'm sorry, Robert Hawk, seven nine seven nine Crawford Road, Hotchkiss.
Thank you.
I kind of feel like the overall idea of this is through this process is by default is kind of navigated away from what it really is. The barn is not, is not the identity of us or the property. You know, we've recently put a conservation easement on there. It encompasses nearly three hundred acres adjoining the two parcels. Like you said, the barn is not the identity of it or ranchers. That's the identity of the property. Thirty-five events, you know, roughly ten percent of the year, days wise. I guess it's a couple less, whatever. It's just an aid to hopefully continue what we have for generations. From my dad to us, to my kids, to hopefully their kids. Like I said, it's not the identity of it. It's an aid to help keep that identity. Just like this year with the conditions. Some income from that will help us along the way with purchasing all the hay that we have to buy. That's my, I've never actually said what my feelings or anything like that is. It's always been strictly to the stuff that follows the land use codes and all that. We had to work through that first. That's that. So moving on to that part of it. A couple of things that, and I think they're in the, some of it's in the business plan and some of it was just discussion and I don't think it all got in there. As far as the alcohol, we talked about this at the planning commission. Beer and wine's fine. If they want any kind of hard alcohol, we're going to require in our contract to have a tip certified server serve that. The hours of operation, and this is something that will probably, I don't know if it fits in the business plan or the, our contract, but our idea with the hours, twelve thirty on the weekends, we are going to have in our contract midnight. That's cleaned up, gone by midnight. That way, it's twelve oh five, we're in a sense not violating it. We don't want to say twelve thirty and it's twelve thirty-five. So that was the idea with twelve thirty. And the contract is going to say, as far as anybody else knows, it's midnight. Ten o'clock for moving the music inside. We spoke to some DJs. A lot of them are paid till ten. Yes, they can probably talk them in and pay them more to stay till eleven. So essentially there, even if they do talk them into staying till eleven, if they have to move inside, by the time they move inside, reset up, are they really going to do it for thirty minutes? Thirty more minutes? We're kind of predicting that it's, the music is kind of done at ten o'clock, whether it's inside or outside. Feel like if you push back to the daylight hours, then it will seem more worth it to move inside. More people stay at last till the end. That's our thought of why we have those for the business hours. The, we're fine with all the conditions. I mean, we've worked through it. They've obviously grown from the beginning. Worked with Sean in the planning department, the planning commission stuff. We're fine with all the, the conditions. A small, one small note, the well location is actually, there's a spot that's, I think Sean said that was nineteen hundred feet and we just didn't, must not work together on that, which is fine. That was something I submitted. That's where there was an existing well. And actually, we, the well could be eight hundred feet away there from our property to there. So it's half the distance, whether that matters or not. I mean, I can pipe it either way. And with the water, there was one mention at the planning commission that about the capacity of the water, you know, for a mistake that was made, say somebody leaves a faucet on or something. So I've thought about a way to mitigate that. What we were want to do is we will have two tanks. Both of them will exceed the capacity. On the septic system, max capacity, two hundred and fifty people is five gallons per person. That's twelve hundred and fifty gallons at max capacity. We won't put, and they're odd numbers, but roughly one tank would be seventeen hundred. Another tank would be thirteen hundred, so three thousand gallons, and they would be isolated. So it's not draining from both of them. So if an accident didn't happen with one, we still have more than enough in the separate tank to finish the event or if we have events close to each other. So that I think that covers what I had.
Any other questions for Mr. Hawk here?
Are we talking two wells or we're talking one well?
One well, but for two holding tanks and we would isolate them.
Now, the footage is, I don't understand the footage. It was nineteen hundred and then eight hundred.
To go back to the.
Yeah, that was our, that was where an existing well was. But if we were to drill a new well, I can, I can get it within eight, eight hundred feet of the venue. It's just because of where the property, it would essentially be, you follow the venue, you follow the road that's going north and south. We own right on the other side of the road right there. Drew, basically directly north of the site.
Oh, that T intersection there.
Yeah, just straight north of where the site is on the other side of the road. That's, that's our property as well. That's a lot closer than over there.
Other questions from?
At this point, are you leaning toward the well or are you leaning toward the water tap?
Honestly, the water tap because it's, we haven't drilled the well yet. I mean, there is other wells drilled there that produce potable water. The, the water tap, it's, I mean, it's potable water. It's always accessible. We're not going to exceed the limitations of what the purchase of it allow. I'll do either.
Thank you, Mr. Hawk. We're going to go to public comment. If there's something that comes up during public comment that you would like to clarify at the end, we'll give you that opportunity.
All right, thank you.
At this point, we're going to go to public comment. We're going to do this so that we'll do those in favor, like to, with the favor of this project will go first and I'll call your name out by the order boy we signed. If you're in opposition to that, this pass on this first go and we'll pick you up on the second time. We're going to allow three minutes per person. We're going to ask that you address the commissioners, not the audience, and keep it pertinent to the project and the issues at hand. If somebody else has already brought up a significant point, you can point it out, but we don't need to cover it multiple times. We've all have seen the comment letters, both pro and con on this and have tried to incorporate this into all the work we've been doing here. So Lindsay will be our timekeeper. She'll let you know when there's a minute left. Please summarize at that point. Are we ready? So we're going to open the public comment. Tom Vender, would you like to speak? Lori Mitchell. Thank you. Clay Norrell. And this would be the, in the pro part, okay?
Thank you. My name is Clay Norrell. I am, I live in the North Fork Valley, along with my two, two daughters and my wife. I'm in favor of the event venue. I've known the Hawk family for several years. I do business with them. I know them personally, professionally. They're good people and I would like to reiterate, I, let me back up. I, I own an insurance agency and I also get to market and sell the Hawk family's cattle. And part of what ties all that together is I'm passionate about keeping ranches and families. I think that's one of the, one thing we really need to focus on where we live right now. It's, it's a challenge. And this is what diversifying a cattle ranch, a ranch looks like. It's, it's out of the box and this, this is what, this is an option to keep a ranch and a family. We have, you know, possibly a third and fourth generation of the Hawk family. We'd like to carry on that ranching legacy and this is a way to do that. I think that at the end of the day, I understand, I do understand, you know, the opposition. I understand both sides of it. I'm also believe that what you do on your own property should be your right. And when you start allowing outside influence on what you do on your own property, it can open up a whole different can of worms. And I, I've known the Hawk family. I had a little brother that actually got married on their property three or four years ago. They were respectful. They were professional. It's, you know, when you look at where at that time that, that wedding took place in a hay meadow, they put up hay, they grazed cattle on it. They had a, had a wedding. That takes planning, that takes, you know, that takes a lot of, lot of moving parts. One minute, yeah. So in summary, I just think, think that there's some common sense that goes into things like this and you're also investing in the people and, but these people, it's, it's, I, I think we should invest in them. Thanks.
Thank you. Teresa Neal.
Teresa Neal, and I live in the North Fork Valley as well. I'm also a multiple business owner in our area. I own a construction company and then I have a little boutique in town in Hotchkiss. I've known the Hawk family since I've lived here a long time ago. I've raised four kids in the area. They're all very involved with the Hawks. They've known them for years. I am in favor of this venue. The Hawk family is an incredible family who just invests their time into this community and I, and, and our county. And I think it's a great thing for us to give them the opportunity to improve it even more. I don't believe they would ever sabotage our area or have a bad, you know, they would want to do everything they could to make this a great reflection on themselves. I also believe that doing these weddings and having this venue, whether it's weddings or baby showers or birthday parties, family reunions, I guess, that also helps my business. I would see a lot of attendees probably in my boutique. I'm assuming the restaurants in the area would definitely benefit from that as well. Accommodations. This county is growing and I think we're crazy not to jump on the train and make it a, a, a good venue and have opportunities here for people to enjoy the beauty that we have in our area. That's about all I've got.
Thank you. Gallego Eagles.
Good morning. I'm a fourth generation resident of, of Delta County. And I also work closely with the commissioners and economic development. This is economic development. This is what the county is paying an economic director to do is to promote economic growth. And also, they also pay a tourism position, which would also be promoted with a facility like this. I know each municipality in town also contributes to that fund for economic development. So I think it needs to be shared countywide. When you think of Delta County, you think of the many thousands and millions of hours of volunteer time. The Hawk family is the face of the volunteers of Delta County. They're at the schools, they're at the festivals, they're at the fairs. They volunteer for water companies, irrigation companies. They're always there to help the firefighters, the EMTs, they make donations to these. And I appreciate the planning commission and the, the, the things that they've implemented to make sure that our firefighters and our EMS are. able to get to these kind of places and put out fires or save lives. I think that the Hawk family is always going to be traditionally that volunteer family. You know, we have billionaires that move into the area, and you never see their face. You never see their contributions to our communities. They don't use local attorneys. They don't support our stores. They have things brought in. Thank you. That's why I wrote it all down. I'm impressed with the way the plan has finally been put together. The only one thing that I do have a problem with is that the Hawks are being asked to pay for mag chloride. I know there's other places that have just as much or more traffic on that same road, and they're not paying for the mag chloride. And just in closing, I think that this is a, this is a way to promote Crawford. It's a way to promote Delta County. It's amazing how small things turn into great things for our area. So I'd just like to say that I think that we should appreciate the fact that they're promoting economic development in our area, and they're also providing public safety to keep people from risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristi Stites.
Good morning.
Good morning. Kristi Stites, Stucker Mesa, Hotchkiss, Colorado. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As Delta County grows, we face an important challenge. How to balance progress with the preservation of our agricultural way of life? The fact is, sustaining a family ranch in West, on the western slope has become more challenging each year. We've seen it the summer firsthand. The rising cost of land, building costs, the expensive operations have outpaced what many ag producers can maintain without adapting. Many agricultural families, like ourselves, have had to diversify, adding things like agritourism, vacation rentals, or event spaces. These additional revenue streams help keep the land in production and families rooted in agriculture. They also generate new income for Delta County by bringing in visitors who spend money at local businesses, restaurants, and lodging. Allowing limited use of their property gives the Hawks a way to continue stewarding their land while adapting to the realities of modern agriculture. Supporting their request isn't just about one family. It's about keeping agriculture viable in Delta County and strengthening the long-term health of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz Hydrick.
Hello. My name is Liz Hydrick. I reside in Crawford, Colorado. I've been a licensed realtor for twenty-one years on September the fourth. I've raised my children in the community. I am going to speak about the values of real estate as it relates to proximity to a venue. I've done extensive research since this started to ease my own concerns and fears about many of the people in the room that I do care very much for, having sold a lot of the properties up in this specific area. The results that I am getting from looking close to home, in other words, events, centers in Grand Junction and Montrose, and even in the North Fork, is that there are no statistics to support the concept that the values of other neighboring properties are reduced by being near an event venue such as a wedding venue. If anything, there appears to be an increase in values. I asked why. I asked other realtors why. I sought information by going door to door to some neighbors. And they said with thoughtful consideration of the venues that actually having an attractive venue in their area seemed to give their community, their neighborhood, a sense of vibrancy. And that, in fact, that they actually believe that when and if they decide to sell, most of them have not felt an impact. If anything, they feel that the impact is lighter than if something more industrial, or, for example, you, you know, there's other at-home businesses that can, that can be more disruptive on a, on a weekday basis, Monday through Friday, you know, type thing. They have, appear to enjoy being near what they consider to be a nice venue. At first, some of them did have concerns and fears, but they have been quieted over the course of time. I ask that you consider their application and that this, in fact, is a beautiful location, and they have had weddings in the past. My daughter did not get to get married this last summer as a result of the closure of this. That, that's probably what initially brought me in, that and the character of the people and the history that they have with that land. So I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. John Paul Coats.
John Paul Coats, fifty-five-year resident of Delta County, thirty-five years Crawford. Known the Hawks my whole life. Great family. They've always supported my children, me. I've had sons get married on this property before it got shut down. It's a beautiful location. It's, it's their property and my, and my feelings. They should be able to do what they want on their property, as long as they keep it within your regulations, the concerns of the neighbors. And I don't think they're going to go make some jump pile out of some venue that they're trying to make a beautiful place out of, and it's one of the most beautiful places in Delta County to get married, so I'm all for it. Hope you guys are too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Andy Pfeifer.
Yeah, I'm Andy Pfeifer. Lived in Crawford my whole life. My granddad homesteaded in Crawford in nineteen sixteen. He bought another ranch in nineteen nineteen. I now own that ranch. Some other families owned it in between. I'm a builder. I built the Hawks barn. And I can't really say much more than what's been said, except for the Hawks have been here as long as my family has or longer. It's sad for me to see what's happened to Delta County in fifty years. Probably different than most of the people here. I don't like a lot of regulation. I don't like a lot of government intrusion in my life. I'm always for less government, so I'm not in agreement with most of what's going on here at all. I think they ought to be able to just do what they want to do on their property. I want to do what I want to do on my property. I realize things are changing. I noticed that most of the people that are here that are in favor of this have lived here their whole life. They've been here their whole life, and they're in favor of this. Most of the people that are here in opposition of this have moved in from somewhere else. There's sixty-four counties in Colorado. There's plenty of counties that are overregulated. You know, my suggestion would be go to one of those counties if you want the regulations. For less regulation, Delta County is one of the only free counties left in Colorado and in a lot of the United States. So that's where my belief is that they ought to be able to do what they want. It's definitely getting harder to keep a ranch in Colorado. Anywhere in Colorado, Delta County, it's, it's working in on us. I've built my ranch. I've paid for it. Well, the bank still owns a lot of it. I'm sure the Hawks feel the same way. They're, they're trying to keep that family in the ranch, and it takes a lot of different things. I can't just go run cattle. I'd love to just do that. I run a sawmill, just like they're trying to do other things. Darryl has shoed horses, Darryl Hawk, his whole life to keep that ranch and to build that ranch. And, you know, this is just one more thing that can help them possibly stay in the ranching business. Most of the people that move here and buy ranches, they have the money, they'll move in and buy a ranch. You'll never see that person. They're not down with the fair, helping these kids. Not just by going and buying animals, but being on the boards and doing those things. A lot of the families that are in here sit on a lot of the boards, the water boards, the different things like that. You don't see many of the people that have moved in here doing those things. So I'm all in favor of the Hawk barn and any other things that can help bring business into our community. I was born a coal miner's son, and coal mining jobs are temporary. And so I like to see more steady employment, which we do see coming into Delta County by these types of things. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Jenna Zeldin Tyce.
Hello, my name is Jenna Zeldin Tyce. I also live in Crawford. I grew up in Hotchkiss for most of my life. Everybody behind me that's for this has said exactly what I was going to say as far as their character. The Hawk family is amazing. They've been there for us since I've lived here. I've watched them in gyms and in the forage world at, you know, they were just there a month ago at, at the county fair. You know, something that I just want to bring up really quickly, I got married seventeen years ago, and about three months before, I was supposed to be getting married at a venue that was going to be outdoors and, you know, just that outside feel, the, the western feel got bought by an outside, you know, someone from, you know, a millionaire. It got bought by them, and it shut us down, and I last minute had to go get married inside of like a city limit type wedding venue. It was not what I dreamed of. It was really, really hard, and it was something that I, I just, I still look back at it, and I mean, of course, I got married, everything's great and all, but this is the venue that I would have gone to. This is a venue that I think our town and our county absolutely needs. I have three children of my own. We have lots of friends that have kids that are, you know, growing up, graduating from high school. They'll be getting married soon, and this is exactly what I'm sure they envisioned, not just for weddings, but for many things, graduation parties, baby showers, whatever. I just think that with a venue like this in such a beautiful area, it's just, you know, it, it can make a lot of dreams come true. On top of that, like people have said before, it opens up the small businesses that could also be being used, photographers, caterers. You know, people that are trying so hard to make things work, especially stay-at-home moms. You know, you see lots of them going into photography, going into hair, going into nail tech, something that they can do, you know, outside of, you know, while their children are in school, and that would help them as well. I just don't see it being anything other than such a positive thing for our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger Clark.
I'm Roger Clark, from Crawford. I'm a next-door neighbor to the Hawks. Darryl Hawk is a cousin of mine. And it wouldn't make any difference to your cousin or any outsider that comes in. I feel that if a person owns a piece of property, they should be able to do what they want to with that property as long as they can meet the regulations. And our regulations are growing more and more every day, and that needs to cease. You can't enforce what you've already got, so why add some more to it? I, I feel great about free enterprise. I'd love to see more of it in this county to support us. There's been very few of us that were born and raised in this county that were lucky enough to stay here, and we've suffered for years trying to make a living, had two and three jobs at a time to stay here. Most of our friends, classmates, and so on and so forth, they've had to leave the area, go somewhere else to make a living. And then, once they've got the living made, hopefully, social security, retirement, or whatever, they come back and try to find a place here. We shouldn't be running them off. We need to be keeping them here, and free enterprise is what does it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll remind everybody, let's keep our comments to the project at hand today. Ralph Clark. Good morning, Ralph.
My name is Ralph Clark. I live on Fruitland Mesa in Crawford, born and raised in Crawford. Have spent my whole life there, never left. Delta County I worked for for forty-three years. I have seen a lot of things go on in Delta County, working within the government system, that a lot of things I agreed with. There's a lot of things I disagreed with. You know, what, what I feel you guys' job is to do what is best for Delta County as a whole, not a handful of people here and a handful of people there. And I have seen that done so many times in this county over the years. Some of those decisions have cost the county taxpayers lots and lots of money. I could sit here all day and tell you stories about different things that have happened that did that. The Hawk family has lived here their whole lives. They're good people. Darryl's a cousin of mine. He's worked hard his whole life, like most of us have to stay in this county. He has proven to me that he wants to keep this county the way it is. He turned his land into Conservation Trust, which, to me, is proof enough that he wants to keep this county like it is. Now, if he wants to do something with the venue, to me, more power to him, because if that will help him keep what he's got as a cattle rancher, that's what we need to do here, is try to help those kind of people out so they can stay here and keep this county as is, for the most part. I mean, change is going to happen. There's no way to keep from that. But this venue is, is going to help the county out overall, especially the Crawford area. Will provide a few jobs for people, you know, doing different things. They will probably employ a few people, part-time, you know, cleaning up, setting up, and all that kind of thing, too, which is badly needed in the Crawford area, because jobs are hard to come by up there. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're still on the, those in support of this, my next name on the list is Ryan Callahan.
Oh, pass it on. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Jarvis.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Susan Jarvis, and I live in Peonia, Colorado. I'm retired from most likely one of the highest regulated industries in the world. Decisions made based millions of people. We looked at our data and our numbers to determine the benefits versus the adverse effects, and we base this on our decisions. I asked this committee to weigh the benefits of the hundreds of people that will benefit versus the few that this might adversely affect. These growth opportunities will not only bring revenue, but will employ or benefit hundreds of people. If I understand the vision of the county, we want to grow and not stifle it. I would ask you, who is benefiting? Hundreds versus the few opposed. I live near Big B's in Peonia. They're open every night of the week. We can hear the music. There's traffic noise and the bus rolling through the valley. I've learned to live with it, because I understand they have the right to do on their property the same as I have my right. Shouldn't the benefits of the many outweigh the possible effects of the few? Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Warren Padgett, you indicated no. Thank you. Brady Todd.
Hello, my name is Brady Todd. I live in Crawford, Colorado. I also own a property on Cottonwood Creek Road, and I grew up there my whole life. I want to start by, thank you guys for what you do. This isn't an easy job. I'm certain of it, and I'm glad I don't have it. But there's two sides here, and it's sad. I figured out, I'm not very old, but no one's ever truly happy. But I think the benefits that come to the community through this wedding venue in our area will be great for younger generations, people moving in. I'm probably the youngest person here speaking, and I, that saddens me, because I I love having young people in the community, and I hope that this brings more. And it's a good family. They're not going to run a terrible business at all. You should be, we're lucky that we have a family like the Hawks doing this, just because it will be maintained and kept up to county standards, and it's going to be clean. You're not going to have to babysit them. You know, if it was somebody else, I'd maybe be a little bit more worried, but it's their land. They're trying to keep it in their family. And I really respect that and it gives me hope for my children and future generations that allowing this entrepreneurship to come into the valley and to ranchers will help, help it, I'm not gonna stay the same, but be very similar and continue the lifestyle that has been here for generations and generations to come. So I really appreciate your consideration and I, I hope this goes through and I know there'll be some negative impact, but the greatness overall for the community, I feel, will be well worth it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Matt Jensen, you indicated no. Tim Austin.
My name is Tim Austin. I live in Peony, Colorado. I grew up in this valley. One thing I want to point out to the commissioners is that there is not a piece of property in this entire county that you can purchase and pay for with the ag products off of that property. There, you can't grow enough hay, you can't grow enough cattle, enough fruit or anything to pay for that property. And agritourism is a, is an option for families, as been stated before, to keep those ag lands in ag. It's a very clean industry and it, there will be some impact, but it will not be, there'll be way more positive impact than negative. When outsiders moved in, they moved into ranch community, they moved into farming communities and they knew it was a farm community. And they knew, and they moved in, many of them under the master plans, which talked about agritourism. So they knew when they moved in that this was an ag community. It's going to be that way. And I'd like to point out that Hawks of all, all the people in this room, they're one of the very few who depend on ag as producers. Most people in this room do not depend on ag for their living. In my opinion, the commissioners are faced with the culture of the county. Where, where are we going here? Are we going to, the complainers get their way? Are we going to small producers get their way? Those who respect the land and take care of the land, they get, you know, who, who gets their way in this situation? And I would hope you would vote for the ag producers. I would hope you would vote for the heritage families. I would hope you would vote for those who are trying to make this place a better place versus those who come here and simply live off the resources that they found when they got here. I'd like to, I'd love to see the county help producers and not, not put your boot on their neck and keep them from being able to produce. So I don't want to be in your position. I appreciate the toughness of this, but I'd hope you vote for those heritage families in agriculture. So, thank you.
Jenny Holmes. Thank you. And if you haven't had a chance to sign up, I don't, do we pass around the clipboard again? David Koontz. And even though our names are pronounced similar, that there's no relation spelled differently.
David Koontz, I live on Redlands Mesa. Unlike most of the people, I've only been here for thirty years. I'm starting to feel like I'm no longer a newcomer, but I'm not a local either. I'm speaking partly from where I come from, which was Steamboat, which we was going through a lot of these same growing pains. My feeling is, what's been expressed already is, if you own the land, you should be able to do what you want with it. And the people move here because they like what's here. It's here because we've had the attitude agricultural people do of live and let live. Now we have a group that's saying, no, I don't want to do that. I want to control everybody. And it shouldn't be done that way. So I, I would hope that you would approve this. One other side comment that we've heard several times, how do you stay in agriculture? Ten years ago, I was faced with a similar situation. My boys and I decided we would put in an egg, chicken barn, egg-laying facility. Had to jump through quite a few hoops, but ever since it's been done, I don't think there's been any complaints. I'm proud of that part. And invite anyone to come see. It's a very clean place. You get within a hundred feet or get more than a hundred feet away from it. There's nothing to smell. You can't hardly see the building. This Hawks barn is gonna be a same deal. It's a way to keep the family on the farm. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Schmucker.
Already been said, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Arlie Clark.
My name's Arlie Clark. I've lived here my whole life. I'm kinda like the Hawk family. My granddad moved here in nineteen oh five. It is agriculture. At this point, unlike a lot of them, we weren't able to sustain the businesses agriculture. We had to do other things in order to live in this community. I've known Darryl and his family and, and our whole lives. I live in Crawford. Most things have been said, but like I said, a lot of us have worked in water companies and reservoirs and all this in our lifetime, tried to keep everything in agriculture. It's a hard, hard deal to maintain. And I think that what Hawks is doing, and I want to point out one thing, there's only one needle rock in the world. So I think they've got something that can be voted draft and it really helps and it'll keep their farm or ranch in the, in agriculture. I'm all for it. I hope you guys consider this to be a viable deal for the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Meeks.
Again, this portion of the hearing is for those that are in support of the venue.
I'm, I'm opposed.
We'll do that.
We wait.
Yeah. We wanted to wait.
Okay, we'll come back to you. Lori Mitchell.
Good morning. My name is Lori Mitchell and I live in Peonia. Thank you very much, Commissioners, for all you do. I wanted to just speak on behalf of the Hawks. You know, agritourism has been around since the nineteen fifties, especially prevalent in Italy and France. And here in this community, I have been able to experience so much of it because there's so many passionate farmers and ranchers in this community. And agritourism was created as a way for farmers and ranchers to survive in lean times, which is just, it's so amazing. And the economic impact, you know, for every person that comes here to, to Peony or to this valley, the North Fork Valley, it's a hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents of economic impact for each person. And you think about the number of people that will be having, coming to the weddings or supporting that venue. It's, it's really immense of what this county is going to receive in economic impact. You know, the other thing is, is having a venue like this, as so many have already said, it supports all kinds of local businesses, people that are living their passion, that want to stay small business. It also, it's cooperative. You know, these, the Hawks, it's, it creates this cooperative environment where everything's a win-win for everyone and we support each other as opposed to being more on the competitive side. I know that they really care for the neighbors. I've met a few of them. I've had the opportunity to, to meet the Hawks and get to know them and it's been great. And they've already been hosting weddings on their land for twenty years. So that says a lot. I've heard and met people that have gotten married there. I think that's something that should be considered as well. I don't think they had complaints back then. They're living their passion as so many are. I think it's important for the legacy portion. I know somebody talked about how young he is and keeping people here, keeping the young people here. I'd like to see my grandson grow up here. He's doing some of our ranching on our property as well. And so by doing this, it's a legacy. It's creating the legacy for future families and farmers to be able to do that. And yeah, I just really appreciate everything and I know that there's the oppositions and I thank you for listening to me. And one other thing I wanted to add is, people that we meet that come to our property, they come here because of the agriculture. They come here because they're getting away from the cities and they're getting away from the concrete and the pavement and they're coming to this beautiful valley that has amazing views and has the beautiful agriculture. So thank you so much. I, I'm totally for the Hawks.
Thank you. We're gonna go to anybody online who would like to speak on behalf of this project. Remember to keep your comments to the project itself. We're gonna ask you to raise your hand and Lindsay's gonna call on you one at a time.
Why don't I just go down the list and then, oh no. I'll go down the list and if you want to speak in favor of the project and you're online, then you can unmute. Angela Reed. Bryce Hester. Bryce, did you want to speak in in favor of the project? Okay, all right, let me unmute you. You got it?
Uh, I believe so. Can you hear me?
Please keep your comments specific to the project.
Understood, thank you. And I apologize to not be there in person, but I appreciate the chance to appear virtually. My name is Bryce Hester. I'm counsel for Darryl, Darryl and Christine Hawk. We've heard a lot about, you know, the community's perspective. I read through some of the comments and I want to briefly touch on just a few of the comments that were submitted via letters. One of the biggest issues that we've talked about is water. And one of the biggest objections I think we're gonna hear about is this idea that Deitch Water Company can't offer this commercial tap. Specifically at the planning commission meeting, there was an augmentation plan that was submitted to the record. And in, in a letter submitted by Mr. Ryan Callahan on behalf of his client, his client asserts the position that that augmentation plan limits Deitch Water Company to one commercial tap. I, I want to offer the opinion to, to the board that there has been no reliable evidence posited to this board from an actual water court authority that Deitch Water Company cannot offer that tap. And until this board hears that, the reasonable basis is that Deitch Water Company knows what it can and cannot offer in terms of its service area. And, and until we get a, a decision from a water court or something to that effect that says Deitch Water Company cannot offer that, we must take their own offer to provide a tap as being something they can do. And the reason I say that is because at the planning commission meeting, we heard two strong objections to Deitch Water Company. And that came from Mr. Callahan on what I presume to be much the same basis that he'll offer here today, but also from Mad Dog Water itself. I would like to frame those two objections in the light of where they're coming from. Specifically, Mad Dog Water is the purveyor of residential taps. If you were to say that no other purveyor is allowed to offer a commercial tap when Mad Dog Water itself doesn't offer a commercial tap, you would effectively be granting them sole yea or nay as to water purveyor in that area. There's an economic interest for Mad Dog Water to have you deny this. So any objection they have as to whether or not Deitch Water Company is allowed to offer that tap should be, one, viewed in they are not a water court and they do not know specifically what Deitch can and can't offer, but they also have an economic interest in you telling Mad Dog Water you get to be the only person to offer or be a purveyor in this area. Secondly, the owner of Mad Dog Water lives near the venue. So there's a personal interest for them to have you deny this. And I just want to ensure that these objections to water taps are being framed appropriately in light of all the interests at play. Secondly, I, I would also just really posit to the board that courts in Colorado have made it clear that when a court analyzes a decision of the Board of County Commissioners, they will defer to those who enforce the codes. That is the board and the planning commission. And I'm at my three minutes here, so please just, I would re, I would redirect the board. Your own planning commission has said this meets the land use code and that is all this board is deciding today, whether it should be approved pursuant to the codes. Thank you.
Who's next, Lindsay?
Carrie Yancer. Would you like to speak to the board?
Good morning, board. My name is Carrie Yancer, former resident of Delta County. I am speaking to you all on behalf of the proposed project that is there that we, even though we don't live in the area, follow very closely and just for a couple reasons. Delta County is near and dear to our heart and even though we do not, no longer reside in the area, our goal is someday to come back that direction. But the biggest reason that we are supporting this is it's often said, don't just leave a legacy, live a legacy. Apologize. Don't just leave, leave a legacy, live a legacy. And I truly believe that one of the goals of the entire Hawk family are doing together as a family is trying to really live that, that legacy of their passion. And the, the thing that I would like the board to consider is the detailed planning and the economical value that will go into this venue as they start thinking about that. They really have put thought into the goal of what this is. It's to, it's to be proactive in growing the area of Delta County and providing opportunities for that. So as you have a decision to make, I sincerely hope that you take heart the power of being able to to help others live their legacy as we continue to embark on the growth and sustainability of Delta County. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Carrie.
Okay, we'll go to CJ. All right, Clay Norrell. Joanna Eder. Cap. Lori. Nico Wolf. Tanya Cowie.
Thank you, Lindsay. That's a little difficult to do. Appreciate you doing it. At this time, we're gonna, we have a few folks that declined to speak during the support of this project. I'm gonna call these names again. If you'd like to speak in opposition, please come up and do so. First is Ryan Callahan.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name's Ryan Callahan with Connerly and Callahan and Montrose, representing Dean Crystal. I believe you've probably read my memo, which Bryce spoke to, and thus you understand our position for today. Namely that onsite means onsite under the land use code, not offsite, adjacent parcels as the Hawks are trying to link together. Secondly, a water tap requirement under a platino means a water tap and not allowable for other potable water sources such as a spring or well, which the Hawks are trying to connect. And the last is that the service area of a water company is where it's physically permitted and legally permitted to extend its water, which isn't the Hawk parcel related to DDWC. Importantly, I think there's three legal fictions that are being suggested to the board today that should be pointed out. The first, and I believe Mr. Gardner forgot to include it in the conditions, but one condition of the water connection with the commercial well is that an easement be granted between the parcels to provide and I think probably to link together more of an onsite nature for those two parcels. But it's a legal fiction to suggest that the Hawks can grant to the Hawks an easement while they collectively own both parcels. The doctrine of merger steps in and would extinguish that easement on the second that it was recorded. And perhaps Mr. Bayer could speak more to that doctrine if the board needs more information. So the idea that you can connect these two parcels on an onsite Uh, so the idea that you can connect these two parcels on an onsite basis through an easement as the Hawks own both parcels uh, doesn't work and, and won't have the legal effect that I believe the, uh, the staff is suggesting. Uh, next, the idea that the DDWC can just provide its water a hundred thousand gallons a year to a commercial venue located five miles away from the, the underlying parcel is a legal fiction. Uh, I understand Bryce's point related to um, we're not water judges, we're not water referees. Um, but the, the augmentation plan speaks for itself. They're permitted one commercial use that's already exhausted and in place. And the specificity of that plan suggests that the idea that you could just pivot this water source to some huge venue like the Hawks' proposal um, just is, in my opinion, a legal fiction and won't stand up. Thank you. Uh, the last is that uh, the water tap restriction allows for various other water sources such as the commercial well on the adjacent parcel. I believe that the, the restriction should be read um, wholeheartedly in that regard uh, and barring that commercial well tap on the adjacent parcel as an adequate source of water. Uh, I have three questions that I'd like the board to address on the record, um, and I think they're important for a clear record today, coming out of today. How is the board defining onsite under the code? How is the board defining service area under the code? And is the board interpreting the platino covering the Hawk Minor subdivision as allowing other sources of water other than the water tap, which is explicitly the prohibition as read? And I'm happy to answer questions now or at any time that the board sees fit.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan.
Thank you.
I'll go to Orin Pageant. You indicated no. Is that still the case?
Okay.
Thank you. Matt Jensen saying he also indicated no. Jenny Holmes.
Hi, I'm Jenny Holmes. I live on four two nine nine six Needle Rock Road. That picture could be taken in my front yard. Um, I, I'm sure the Hawks are a great family. I, but I do oppose the event venue. So the rock is, it's super interesting. It's seriously, it magnifies everything. When hikers go up there, there can be five hikers and I can hear them in my living room. And I go out and I'm like, where are the people? Where are the people? Oh, they're up on the rock. There's no one in my front yard. They're literally on the rock. So the fifty-five decibels, I don't know if you've heard what that sounds like. It's, it's, it's actually pretty loud. And when the rock magnifies fifty-five, I don't have a decimal thing on my phone, so I couldn't tell you. I just know that five people hiking up to the rock is loud. So yeah, we might have come from another place. We bought our property in ninety-one in hopes to retire here. Um, came up here every summer since then to check on it, have little family reunions of our own. I understand agriculture as well. Um, I come from agriculture, so I completely understand that it is tough and you probably need agritourism. Could we do agritourism where there's less than two hundred and fifty people on their property and still make good money? I think so. I think there's things that they could do on their property that don't include alcohol, that don't include two hundred and fifty people. Thirty-five weekends a year is our season to be outside. And so it kinda, kinda puts a lot of noise, dust, um, all of that stuff into the people that actually live on that rock, that live there for the peace and quiet. Yeah, we moved next to cows. I love cows. I, I listen to cows um, all day long. I don't wanna listen to DJs. I don't wanna have a bar next door. I don't wanna have it loud up and down the road. And I don't think that us as the neighbors should have to pay that seventy-five hundred dollars to keep our road, to keep our road dry. So yeah, I'm opposed to it for those reasons. Those were, have, my one question, I guess, for the, the commissioners, have you guys driven up to their proposed property? It's a dead end. And there's quite a few people that live beyond their property that my fear for them is the people that live above the property aren't gonna be able to get out. So how do they get in and out of their property when there's two hundred and fifty or a hundred plus cars parked along that way, coming and going from in that event on any given weekend? It just, it just becomes so busy on that road. We've already had a car turnover, by the way, if you hadn't heard the, the police report that a car flipped on Cottonwood going down that road. They didn't know how to drive on the corduroy. I assume they were going too fast. I don't know who they are, but their car flipped and landed in the field right there, right next to the Hawks' property. Yeah, so anyway, I'm opposed to it for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Maves.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, my name is Cynthia Maves. For the last thirteen years, my husband and I have lived at four three six one two Cottonwood Creek Road, adjacent to the proposed venue site. Uh, there has been a lot of opinions for the Hawk venue from people who don't live anywhere nearby. The Hawks' generosity and integrity are not in question here. The disruption too and safety of families living near the proposed site are. From my porch, I can hear a small car approaching a half mile away. The barn is less than a quarter mile away from us. Their business plan calls for amplified outdoor noise till twelve thirty AM. We chose to buy our property because it was quiet and sparsely populated. Possible new residential construction was limited to water availability. Cottonwood Creek Road is the access road. It services families adjacent to and east of the barn. It's a dark, single, narrow dirt road that is only entrance to and exit from our residences. It is one way in and one way out. Everyone in this room knows we are living on a tinderbox. Wildfires are raging throughout the western slope. Families east of the barn could be trapped if and when a fire occurs. The probability of human-caused ignition increases with two hundred and fifty partygoers at the barn thirty-five times a year. If approved, this will negatively impact the already stressed environment, human and wildfire population in the area. Thank you.
Anybody online that wants to speak in opposition to this project, Lindsay?
Is there anyone online? I'm gonna go ahead and call. Um, is there anyone online with, with any proposition?
Hearing none, okay. At this point, we're gonna close public comment. Uh, Mr. Hawk, you've heard some comment today. Is there anything you'd like to clarify or bring to the commissioners? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Hawk, so. Technically, we're both. No.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner, anything else for the commissioners? At this point, gentlemen, it comes to us, far as far I do that. I wanna say thank you to everybody, both in the room and online. Your comments today were civil and respectful, um, both for and against this project. We appreciate that. Um, again, I think that's the Delta County way. So thank you, everybody, for being here. It is now incumbent upon the, the commissioners to evaluate this project and make a decision. Certainly, the Hawk family deserves to know um, where we stand on this. So, gentlemen, do you have any discussion comments before we move forward?
I have a question, Daryl. Are you okay with all the conditions that the planning commission has provided?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I would just have a few comments. Um, first of all, this goes back to January when I first came onto this board. I believe it was at my first meeting that we, we turned this down with the things in mind like water. That was our big concern. There was a request to vacate the subdivision, which we, which we turned down as well. Um, so there's been a lot of water under the bridge since then. A lot of things have happened. You know, we, we've got this document in front of us this morning that has conditions attached to it, but I think the answer is, in my mind, some of the bigger things that have been kinda plaguing this have, have come to fruition. And so I think we're seeing the, the end result of that. Um, I would also echo the comments this morning. Appreciate everybody taking time out of your busy lives to come and, and talk to us and uh, that means a lot. It shows an interest in this project and um, going back to Mr. Hawk's opening comments when he said that um, you know, his identity is not wrapped up in this building. Their, their intention is to continue to ranch and to find another way to make that viable from this point into the future. So that's been a part play into this as well. So, thank you all for coming and we'll work through these stipulations.
Well, Mike Craig, knowing condition of approval number two, um, it stated that the applicant uh, is okay with no outdoor music festivals or concerts. Um, I think that should, if we approve it, that should be part of the condition of approval.
I agree.
And also there is amended hours and condition of approval number four. That provides some real clarity. Uh, I think that also should be part of this if it's approved.
I would also agree with that and Mr. Hawk stated that in their, their contract, they will specify twelve AM is this cutoff time, but that gives him a little cushion of room there, word.
Condition of approval number six, this is a commercial venture, so classifying it as residential does not make sense to me. Is that jive with what you guys know?
I would, I would follow all that one as well. It doesn't make any sense to me.
And then number eleven, I think we have clarity there on the road bond at seventy-five hundred dollars per year. Cover seventy-five percent of the cost of the purchase and application of Mag Chloride. That should also be part of this.
Agreed.
And then number thirteen, um, stating that the venue owner should comply with all Colorado state liquor laws. That's, uh, probably should have to go without stating, but it's in there and I, I agree with it. As far as the water goes, we've heard um, two legal opinions on the Deitch Domestic and the well. It is our intent through the land use code that each venue uh, or home has adequate water supply. I believe that the, the applicants have demonstrated that. They have two adequate water supplies uh, with a well and with the water tap as indicated by Deitch Domestic. So I'm, it's my opinion that they've met those conditions.
I would agree, but uh, I have no further questions.
The Mag Chloride, is that asking too much for them? Seventy-five percent? They agreed, but is that? Do you think that's fair? Do we think it?
I do. I do.
And I think going forward, you know, this is gonna be a renewal. We can look at that in, in a year, two or three and decide how it squares up with the actual cost to versus what their, what their portion of it's gonna be.
Okay.
It might be adjusted at some point in the future, but I think going forward from the get-go, I think that that's all a good number to start with. So having said all that and understood the things that we've talked about this morning and where we've come from in a relatively long period of time, I would like to make a motion that we consider project two four dash oh six three, the Hawk uh, condition for a conditionally used permit for an event venue and approval.
Do we need to direct staff to draft a resolution uh, to that effect and list the conditions also?
Would you like to amend that?
I will amend my motion to include what Mr. Lane just added.
I second that.
So for clarity, the, the motion is to direct staff to draft a resolution to adopt, to approve and adopt the uh, conditions of approval for the Hawk event venue. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Just a clarification, are you um, directing staff to create that resolution and authorizing signature of the board right now? Is that what you're doing? Or are you gonna bring that position back?
No, let's authorize signature. This has gone on long enough.
Okay, so maybe that's all amended.
All, all the amended motion included.
That work for you?
Yes, I'll second that, yeah.
Any other discussion, gentlemen? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so done. Again, thank you, everybody, for being here today. We appreciate the civility and respect that you've shown for each other. We're gonna take a ten-minute recess and come back for the um, Brock investment. Coming back on record, this is August nineteenth. Delta County Board of County Commissioners, we're in the planning section. Our next review is uh, project twenty-five dash zero zero two. Uh, I'll turn this over to Mr. Gardner.
Mr. Gardner, I will recuse myself during the Brock's presentation.
This application is uh, for consideration of clustered subdivision plat. The subject property is Dog Fessman Road on fifteen eighty Road. To Bronco Court is approximately one and a half miles south of the city of Delta. In eight thirty-five zone is surrounded by properties that have been zoned eight thirty-five with acreages from about four acres to hundred fifty acres in size. Parcel is also bordered by properties to the east. There's a eight-five with acreages ranging from one point three acres to four point twenty-seven acres. The, on the preliminary plat, we would make slightly. All lots are vacant except for lot six, which is um, down in the kinda southern part of the of the subdivision, which currently has a single family residence and an ADU. Uh, they're currently under construction or nearing completion. These are not complete already. This, of course, is the first resident on, on vacant parcel and the ADU that um, isn't allowed use by right on vacant parcels. So that's the premise under which it got, it was begun to the construction. The rest of the lots are not yet developed, but will be required to have water taps before the signing of the final plat. Tri-County has verified that they can and will supply taps. Accesses uh, to all lots are shown in blue off of Bronco Court there on the diagram on slide. And uh, with the exceptions of, of lot seven, lot seven is accessed from fifteen eighty Road and also the stewardship area, which is in the light yellow. Will have an access coming off the end of Bronco Court and one in the pink coming down below. Um, you know, through an easement along the southern border of lot uh, seven and six. Um, the, this parcel has been zoned by, by Delta County Land Use Code as Article thirty-five, which requires a minimum acreage of thirty-five acres per lot to subdivide. However, chapter three of the Land Use Code allows for cluster subdivisions, which allows uh, for a subdivision of higher density in smaller lots than required by the zoning district on the condition that the lots are designed in such a way as to protect us significant resources such as natural habitat, open space, or land for agricultural use. Um, the protected area is to be protected within the stewardship area. In chapter twelve, section three of the Land Use Code provides the standards of cluster subdivisions and the required stewardship areas. Those standards uh, state that they must have a, the stewardship area must have a stated objective. The objective of this stewardship area is to, is the preservation of agriculture. The stewardship area has to be interconnected within the subject property and this one is. The road systems are to allow for safe and efficient movement. This road design has been reviewed by county engineering and meets that requirement. The lot lines and lot areas are to optimize the stewardship objective. They do. The stewardship area has to be identified and mapped on the final plat, which it is. And uh, the stewardship areas that again have a stewardship area planned is to be approved by the county and is recorded and referenced in platnotes on the final plat and that's the conditions put into the draft condition to approval. We also provided the um, the developer with the stewardship area plan requirements checklist uh, for drafting that stewardship area plan, so they would know what would be expected for approval by the county. The stewardship area plan is to specify the area's objectives and how it would be managed and The stewardship area plan is to specify the area's objectives and how it would be managed and it's to be followed for these twenty years. Uh, there are other standards for building envelopes, but none have been proposed in this project within the stewardship area. And uh, the developer who will come and speak has indicated that he intends to put this area into a conservation easement. Which of course would be optimum for fulfilling the intent of the stewardship area. So the developer is proposing to develop eight buildable lots occupying approximately fourteen acres. You, you can see up here. The picture to the left, the, the area that's green, approximately fourteen acres. Be occupied um, with the eight lots, leaving twenty-two acres in the stewardship area. Um, arguably constituting a significant portion of the whole parcel area as required for cluster subdivision. Uh, four of the lots run along the slope that divides the two agricultural fields and the other four lots, lots one, two, seven and eight. Occupied the southern half of the eastern agricultural field, taking about six acres out of agricultural production. Irrigation infrastructure is being reconfigured to accommodate the proposed new development. And so. Essentially staff finds that the design protects a significant amount of irrigated agricultural lands with a mechanism that ensures irrigation will continue. Thus optimizing the stewardship objective. Uh, condition number eleven in the draft conditions of approval addresses the stewardship area requirements for approving and reporting the final plat. There are really uh, just two um. Agency, uh, review agency recommendations that require your consideration. In particular, I mean, they all do, but these two in particular, I just wanna highlight. Uh, the first is the access from uh, Testman Road. The level one traffic study pointed out that the existing intersection configuration of Testman Road and fifteen eighty road. Not a typical intersects, intersection configuration. The north and east legs do not intersect. There is a continuous flow, small radius curve that connects the two legs. So a testment, it just curves ninety degree elbow there. The south and east legs merge at the connection point. So the fifteen eighty road and the driveway coming in uh, from the west. They, they connect at this point where Testman Road curves. And the west leg doesn't align with the east leg. You can see the arrows that have up there of the. Testman Road and the driveway, they, they're not in alignment. They're offset. Same with the north and south, they're offset. So this is kind of the problem that was noted in the, in the traffic study and the traffic engineer recommended. An evaluation of geometric alternatives for this intersection and the county engineer agreed. The county engineer uh. Recommends that the board require the applicant to provide an engineered geometric alternative. For the intersection of fifteen eighty and Testman Road. There was a memo in your packet regarding that. If the board accepts this recommendation, the following items should be required as part of the design and analysis. Number one, the design must be prepared by a licensed engineer and conform to Delta County roadway design and construction standards. Number two, the analysis must evaluate the location of irrigation structures on both sides of fifteen eighty road. And as part of the analysis, he recommended the relocation of irrigation structure on the east side of fifteen eighty road. Can't see it very well there, but I got a picture of it. There's a. Uh, of that side of the upper right corner. Number three, the analysis must evaluate the location of the existing driveway at nineteen ninety-one. Fifteen eighty road concerning Testman Road and fifteen eighty road intersection. So that's the. Private driveway that goes to the west there of that uh, county intersection. So condition number seven of the draft conditions of approval addresses this recommendation of the county engineer. The other consideration is uh, fire protection. There is one existing uh, fire hydrant at the entrance from Testman Road. You can see in the picture there at the base of the sign to the left. There's a fire hydrant and uh, kinda an arrow pointing to where that's at on the plat. And there's some distances there in the slide provided um. For how far that is from like the farthest house on lot six, which is about one thousand two hundred and fifty feet straight line. Um, that fire hydrant uh, confirmed with tri-counties on a six inch tri-county water line. In the picture um. Well, let me just say that, uh, you know, I asked the fire district for where would they require any additional fire hydrants to be placed. They first provided me with a bunch of code, NPA code, and I just asked them, please interpret and tell me where you want the hydrants. And so um. I mean, I, I wanna, I don't wanna interpret the code and decide where the hydrants kinda go. I asked them to do so. So the fire district then proposed three locations. Again, sorry it's so small, but. The first, so there's the existing hydrant there at the entrance of fifteen eighty road.
Eighty forty-one?
There's a second one at the um, intersection of fifteen eighty road and Bronco Court as you enter the courts. And then a third one at the end of Bronco Court up where there's the kinda cul-de-sac turnaround. And then the fourth one at the end of fifteen eighty road where you depart from fifteen eighty road essentially into the venue access. I, I kinda questioned the fire district. I mean, a little bit about like the proposed placement um. Of hydrants B, C and D. And whether or not it would suffice to just have, say, one hydrant at the ninety degree bend in Bronco Court, which would be sufficient for reaching all the lots with. They said that they typically have nine hundred feet of hose on fire truck. Looks to me like that could reach all lots sufficiently, but. The district defended their proposed placements based on the codes they referenced and some pragmatic site considerations. Um, hydrant D, the one that's at the bottom of fifteen eighty road is proposed for reaching lot six. Also for reaching the event center, which is outside the purview of this application. So um, the applicant also, if you go to the next slide, provided um, a map here. No hard to see, but all the places where the red dots are where there are current heat, um, fire hydrants. You can kinda see. You know, um, that. How they're dispersed among various uh, subdivisions that are adjacent to this proposed subdivision. And so I'll let the applicant speak to that. Um, we've received not very many public comments with, with regard to this application. The few that we have all had similar things to say, but mostly. About the promise to keep uh. All the seventy or so acres that were part of the event venue application in agriculture. And that uh. That this subdivision, you know, proposal um, contradicts that. Um, with that, if there's any questions, I'll go on to the um, conditions of approval.
Let's do.
If you have a comment.
Go ahead.
Lot six does two, does have two access points at this point, which is uh, compliant with the land use code.
I did see in the packet though, one is to be removed.
Mr. Claire.
Okay, thank you.
So uh, the conditions of approval. Number one, PLN twenty-five zero zero two is approved as a cluster subdivision preliminary plat. Creating eight lots in the eight thirty-five zoning dis- designation located on the west side of fifteen eighty road. Uh, this approval shall expire and the plat is considered vacant if the final plat is not submitted within twelve months from the date of preliminary plat approval. By the Board of County Commissioners, written request to extend this timeframe must be uh, received by the planning department at least thirty days prior to. Describe expiration. Two, all existing and proposed easements and encumbrances, including but not limited to. Existing and proposed utility easements, shared access and water delivery shall be shown on the final plat. Three, proof of adequacy of water supply is required for preliminary plats. All water sources within the subject property shall be listed on the final plat prior to recording. On-site wastewater treatment systems uh, permits will need to be applied for once the lots are developed. OWTS will be designed, installed and permitted according to CDPHG and Delta County Environmental Health Regulations. Or four, access permits shall be issued for each lot within the subdivision. Said permits. Shall be completed and issued prior to final plat approval. So that would account for your lot with six. Number five, prior to accepting a final plat, maintenance agreements for fifteen eighty road and Bronco Court shall be provided. For ongoing maintenance, right-of-way mowing and snow removal at the expense of the owners of the lots in the subdivision. The maintenance agreement shall be recorded in the chain title of the affected lots. Or six, prior to accepting a final plat, fire hydrants shall be installed in the subdivision. In accordance with the flow and location standards provided by Delta County Fire District. Number seven, prior to accepting a final plat, the entrance from Testman Road to fifteen eighty road shall be redesigned by professional engineer. And then constructed and approved by Del- by county engineering. Rate, prior to recording, the final plat, the plat must include a plat note explaining rights to irrigation water. The final plat must also include the number of shares for each lot. Nine, prior to accepting a final plat, the applicant shall provide deeds with the legal description for each new lot with. Motorized signatures to be recorded with the final plat. Ten, the final plat shall include all standard plat notes required in twenty-four land use code. Number eleven. Limiting things on the use of or development activities within the stewardship area shall be set forth using annotations on the final plat. Or by cross-reference to recorded covenants, deeds, deed restrictions or conservation easements. Stewardship plan as agreed by the county shall be recorded, referenced in a plat note. Deed restricted for twenty years. That part was added by the PC. It's highlighted in red, I believe in your packet. Describing a plan for the property owners managing of the stewardship area for at least twenty years. Twelve, the applicant shall pay the public sites open space fee, three hundred dollars per lot for an increase of. Eight lots for total of twenty-four hundred dollars. For resolution twenty-one R double seven. Open space fees for the project shall be paid in full prior to recording final plat. Thirteen, all roads within subdivision shall be crated asphalt or better. That was a condition added by the PC. For your consideration. So staff and PC recommend the following action to the BOCC. That uh, you find that PLN twenty-five oh two, zero zero two, uh, Prok Investment LLC is consistent with applicable. Policies of the two thousand eighteen master plan and complies with the requirements of the twenty-four land use code for preliminary plat and. Conditionally approved. This project to subdivide thirty-six point fifteen acres in the eight thirty-five zoning district into eight lots. Ranging in size from one point one nine acres to three point thirty-seven acres. With a twenty-two point zero three acre parcel dedicated as a stewardship area.
And that concludes his presentation.
Thank you.
I was waiting for that. Thank you, Sean. Any questions for Sean before we ask the applicant to come?
Nobody.
I did have one question for Tim. Um, redesign of fifteen eighty and Testman, that was an issue when. Um, the initial approval of the event venue was in. With all the irrigation structures and I believe there's a power pole there. This looks to be very difficult. What's your opinion?
It will be difficult and I would also state that. If an engineered geometric alternative is not feasible, that it's written. You know, letter form from a registered engineer stating the reasons why. That would also be acceptable.
Chairman and Commissioner, I think maybe it might be good to just kinda flesh out um. The stewardship area and Sean, I'll ask you to, you know, I know you and I had some conversations. This. Creates kind of a, is an interesting situation. The stewardship area is going to be legally defined, which is required of course. Um, and identified as a separate parcel. Um, I think it needs to be clear when those, the plan is developed. At least my understanding of this and anybody in the room that knows differently is have, is welcome to say otherwise. The stewardship area is not available for development. So in other words, because I don't believe that the, the property owner, developer. Is being required to buy a water tap or septic or, you know, the, some of these sort of things. And I think that's right, but I just wanna say this out loud. Um, and it's gonna be controlled by this stewardship uh, plan. Uh, and if it goes into conservation easement, even, even better, cause then it's locked up in perpetuity, but, but I, I think it, it's important to. I, I think all of us need to continue to work on that concept of a stewardship area that is separate. From any of the other lots. And so I'm just kinda bringing it up to the board to hear this. And Sean, tell me how that's gonna be fleshed out. Is that gonna be fleshed out in a plan, then?
Yeah, I mean, fortunate in this case that the uh, developer wants to make the stewardship area a separate parcel. Because it makes it very distinct as a, you know, and, and legal description. And then in the stewardship area, plan requirements are to be provided, that be extracted from the land use code. We did clarify that uh, i- if there were, there's an allowance for building envelopes in the stewardship area, but those building envelopes. Cannot be used for residential structures. That they could be used to, you know, for a barn or a shed or things of that nature. Um, that are in keeping with the stewardship area objectives. So. I don't know if that, you know, addresses all the questions you're considering, John.
How is water handled in the stewardship plan? Irrigation water?
Don't have any specifics about requirements for the water in the stewardship area. Except in the case that it's used for agricultural purposes, there has to be adequate water supplied for that.
I'll save that question for the applicant then. Anything else, Sean?
No, I think, I think it's just, this is a little bit novel because it's a separate parcel. It's a little novel, uh, because I think when we talk about. Building envelopes, conceptually, some of these might be, you've got a lot. With a building envelope of this where the house and the garage is gonna go and the rest of it is preserved in the stewardship area. This is presented a little bit different way and then probably fine. And actually, it's cleaner in some ways, but it also creates. Other questions. And that's what I'm just kinda trying to flesh out. I wanna make sure that, that we're, uh, what, uh, ultimately, I wanna make sure we're not creating another lot. That there's been no requirements for water or access or, or septic or anything. And I don't think that's anyone's intention. But I just wanna, I wanna, when we get to that point, wanna make sure that that's clear.
We don't wanna create a problem twenty years down the road.
Correct.
I would like to go back to Testman and fifteen eighty, Tim. If you say it's technically not feasible. Does that not, are we not creating a non-conforming or a dangerous issue by? Not rebuilding that intersection or re-engineering it?
Possibly. Um, the study um. Recommends that the geometric alignment be conducted, and I agree with that. To make sure that safety is. The irrigation structure on the east, southeast side of that intersection is the biggest concern.
It was before too.
Right.
And a power pole, but that can be moved.
Right.
Any other questions?
Just that intersection, I would agree. That's a, that's a sticky one. If we come up with a solution, we need to pursue it because. We're increasing the traffic right there on that corner by doing this and. Um, the design, if it's left alone, is problematic as it is, so.
Well, I'd like to ask the applicant. Mr. Brock, you've heard some of the concerns we've had.
Sure.
So could you introduce yourself and make sure that microphone's on?
Yep, I'm Zach Prok, um, the applicant and one in charge of. Kinda can, or I mean, uh, Prok Investments.
Uh, one of the first concerns we had was the fifteen eighty Testman intersection. Can you tell us more about how that could be rebuilt and still maintain function for both irrigation and traffic?
Yeah, as we, as we look at that, you, you had talked about a telephone pole or a power pole there and I'm not. I guess I'm not sure exactly where that's at. I, I, I'm not sure that there is a power pole.
I guess I'm not sure exactly where that's at, I, I, I'm not sure that there is a power pole that's, that is there or with that. I don't, unless Tim knows of something, but I, I don't remember that being there or there anything there, there's.
Could you zoom in on that left picture?
Thank you, it's Ben's far and then I'll go in. And I can bring my computer over to you.
But there, as far as the irrigation's concerned, there is that, that structure that's there, it's changed a little bit and, and improved. The county has put a new culvert in, and when they did, they extended that culvert. And, and got a lot more of that kind of out of the county right away.
There are powerful on the inside corner of Testman.
There's no powerful there.
There's one on the, on the opposite side.
On the.
On the inside, there's nothing on the outside. On the inside, it caused a little bit of, uh, potentially caused a little bit of a problem with, if we move that irrigation structure. To that inside corner, um, which is the delivery mechanism for. The, all the lots over in that subdivision ridge, is it ridge court, ridgeway, ridge. Where, uh, to that subdivision, that's where that water's going. Uh, but nothing on the outside curve or on my side of, of the deal. So, but the county did extend that, it did help that corner quite a bit, and then we as well, there was a, a private um. Waste ditch that came in from the west side, and we extended all of that and, and got that out of the county right away as well to really open that up. So there is, I think there's, it's twenty two feet wide. I don't, I don't think that Tim has that on his drawing, but it's, it's, it's a wide subdivision. I mean, a wide um driveway going in there. Um, I think the limitations are that, you know, that the, the west side of that intersection is not truly. A public road, it's, it's just a driveway. Um, so yeah, it is offset, it was existing, it, it was there long before we were there and, and okayed by the county. Um, but we really don't have any say in that, I, I can't reroute his driveway. Or force him to move or to change his property line. Um, so I think that that's, and it's a single, you know, single home that's there. Um, so really has very little traffic. And then, you know, as far as our alignment that comes in and heading to the north, it's really, yeah, it's, it's off a couple of feet, but. It's not off a long ways. Um, and, and in talking to, I, I called and talked to the Rockin Valley Water Users about what it would possibly take. That canal is, is owned by the Bureau of Reclamation, um, which adds a, a, a fair amount of difficulty in moving things and adjusting things. The other thing is it's not my water, um, it's not my head gate, and so then I'm, I'm, I'm altering everybody else's delivery system. On, on their water by moving that to the opposite side of the road. Um, if that's, if that's what's desired. The other thing that I think is important for you guys to know is, is that since the event venue has been going on, they've had, they've held thirty six events. Had five thousand two hundred and eighty seven guests as far as if they just stayed at their normal registered level. Doesn't include any of the construction guys in and out, or any of the construction that we have done. Um, either on the house this next door or on doing all the infrastructure that we had. There's not been, we talked to the sheriff, there's not been one accident in that section of road since we have started. So, that's a, that's a lot of people pulling in and out of there with really no problems at all. Um, also, I double-checked with Everett, see if there's been any complaints on that traffic. Or any other issues that people have called in on, there's been no complaints as well.
Any other questions on the fifteen eighty and Testman?
Um, we had talked about, I think Sean or I the other day about possibility just putting up some. What, what do we call those things Sean, the barricades?
Allards?
Allards and steel concrete filled. Bright yellow around there just to keep people's attention focused on not dropping, dropping into the ditch. On the southeast side there near the, near the head gate or near the ditch and all that. So that may be just a safety thing, I mean, it's not going to obviously realign anything, but. It, it's a pretty open area there, if somebody's not paying attention and they're coming down that road and they don't make the little two foot jog to the left or whatever to get around that. And they end up in there someday, that could be a problem. Bright yellow barricades might be enough of a visual deterrent to keep them out of there.
Tim, this project does get approved, it would be, we'll be looking at you to make sure that. The redesign of this intersection is done to the very best standards, can be done.
Yes, the other thing that we did and that was provided in the package, but, you know, I had Delmont Consultants, an engineering firm, come and look at that. And, you know, there, they said, and I quote, the overall, overall, this looks like. A safe and fully functional intersection that will work for the proposed subdivision. Um, so I did go and get a licensed. You know, engineer to come and look at that and to give an evaluation and to, and to see what needed to be done of any or what his thoughts are and. And I checked with him again this last week and he really does not think that, that we need to alter what's there for, you know. For safety and then with the track record that's happened in the last year.
And the other topic that came up here, certainly you heard Mr. Brock, was the stewardship area, twenty two acres. And it's a separate parcel. My question was, how will the irrigation water be tied to the land, what's the plan for that?
Well, it's, it's, the water's provided by Rockin Valley Water Users, that water is not transferable off the ground. Um, it is tied to the, to the ground, so I can't, can't take it and move it to the other parcel that I've got, I, I can't do anything like that. So it, it is set there, um, we did run and, we did put that in underground irrigation system. Um, and ran it down to the lower fields, put um, alfalfa valves in there, so that's all set up. And then we'll have a, we have a set as well so that those lots have irrigation water on them to be able to maintain their, their landscaping. As well, and that'll go into an H O A, although, you know, just like Sean said, X amount of water, we dedicated each lot. Um, that H O A will maintain that, that part of it and that water. And then the rest of it will, will be delivered by Rockin Valley Water Users.
And you're okay, it's twenty year restriction on the stewardship?
Yeah, no, that was part of going into this whole thing in the beginning and. There was, there's no surprises on that.
And the other condition that the planning commission brought up was the crushed asphalt or better for all roads?
Though, I think we've already done fifteen eighty road, uh, fifteen eighty road is, is a fairly long straight road. It is possible to go a little faster, in fact, I was just over there while you guys were doing your previous session here and. You know, one of the neighbors cruised down it in his little ranger, or little side by side cruising ride along to go up and check his head gate and. And there was no dust at all until I got to the, to the third part of that section along my field. But to turn it in, I just don't think it's necessary to do or to require it on Bronco Court. It's a real short run, um, with two nineties on it, on it. And then once, once they do hit fifteen eighty road, that'll, that is crushed, all crushed asphalt. So I don't, I just, I don't think that we're going to mitigate any dust by doing so, it's just, it's such a short amount of road.
What's the proposed surface then in Bronco?
Just a, a gravelled, just like any other county road.
So the land use doesn't require paving until eight, more than eight lots, so he's in compliance.
Other questions, Commissioner?
I don't think so, I think we've pretty much touched on all the things that we were thinking about.
Sorry, only picking up on what the, um, Brock just said, said like any other county road, but.
This is not private.
We're not proposing to take this as maintenance while it's gravelled.
Correct.
Correct, that's, that's.
My knowledge, the current policy is still, we don't accept count, gravelled roads for county maintenance.
I want to make sure.
Yep. But, yeah, I think the only other thing is if, if we want to touch on hydrants for just a, a quick second. Um, you know, going through this whole process, um, I needed to extend the, the water main. Through the property to be able to get it to the, the event venue. So, at that time, I tried to meet with staff, tried to see what we, we thought that we would need to do. Um, again, you know, without having a set fire department in and set rules in the county. It's a little bit difficult and our volunteer fire chief is not willing to, to talk to private individuals. So we did the best thing we, we could, we extended the, the main and we did put in. A, a hydrant, be proactive and to, and to get that done ahead of time. I think the biggest concern is, you know, if we continue to run that line. One is we're, we're upgrading the system as is, the, the main out on the road is four inch and we're upgrading it to six inch. Because that's what the standards will be in the future. Um, and the, the other thing is we, we run into a water quality issue. Um, hopefully we never ever see a fire in that subdivision or with any of those houses, and more than likely we won't. Um, however, everybody in that subdivision is going to be using that water. And if we, we run in a, a great big line, that then sits there stagnant because we don't have enough users on it. It poses other health risks, and I think it's important to think about that as well as everybody's going to be using that water, there's no doubt about that. And so it's important that we, we, we have a system that is easily maintained, um, as well.
So there is a hydrant now, uh, no, there is not a hydrant, D is, is a recommended location.
There's one existing hydrant right up at where Ted, that you entered the property from Testman, up at the very top.
Oh, existing, okay, yeah, there it is, and the next one is where after that?
And right as you enter into Bronco Court, there is not an existing one, these are all proposed additions after that first one.
So after the, after the first one is there, there is no other one uh, that way.
Correct, when we, when the, the wedding venue went in, there was, that was not a, a condition of use. Um, to put, to install one, um, we just went, because we were extending the line anyway, we just went ahead. Extended the main and put one in just on our own.
At, near, near the venue, is that where the next?
No, it's, the only one is, is right there at.
That's it.
At the, at the corner, and we put that one in voluntarily, um, for this, this subdivision or in thoughts that we would do this subdivision. So we put that one in on our own, outside of that, there was, there was nothing for the, the venue or any of that, that was not. Required.
Is there a, what would be the fire hydrant schematic in Snapple bit? That would be the closest proximity subdivision, is that our way to?
That, that's showing the existing.
Those, those red dots are the hydrants.
In Snapple bit as well, okay.
There's two in Snapple bit for those seventeen lots.
And who made this recommendation on the additional three?
The Delta County Fire District, number one.
Delta?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, sorry.
Yeah, we don't have.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
No, just.
You don't want to get into the fire protection business?
And Louis put it on.
Yeah.
Um, how do you feel about it, Mr. Brock, what's your, what's your gut feeling, are you?
I think it's important for us all to be safe and, and to not cause any problems, but I think that if we look at that spot versus. You know, if we looked at every hydrant that was around the county, I, I think that putting that, that additional one, or the one that I put in there. I think that that pretty well covers that, um, the, the farmer that actually that's farming that piece of property is on the Montrose fire. He's a, he's a full-time firefighter in Montrose, and I asked him, I understand he's not a professional in, in. As far as code is concerned or anything else, but I just said, hey, if we had a fire in here, do you think that we could handle this with the hydrant that's there? And, and then if we needed to, having the, the others in Snapple bit, and he didn't bring up any concerns or didn't think that that was a problem in doing that.
I guess I'm only, I'm only thinking about uh, insurance companies and how, how they like to see the fire hydrants within a certain distance of a structure. So if we're looking at this back lot, lot three, you know, how far is that back tracking to get back to that hydrant? You could be doing your, your, your future neighbors a favor by putting it in now, while it's relatively easy. And because if you could centrally locate a hydrant in there that would service all those lots. You know, they could potentially look at, be looking at some savings on, on insurance down the road. And, and potential for quicker fire response in case of emergency. Because that, that, the hydrant that's existing clear out there is going to be hard pressed to get back into that, into that cul-de-sac. Uh, especially when some fences go up and that kind of stuff, it's going to have to come down the road and around the corner and up the lane. I'm not looking at distances here, but how far is that, does anybody have an idea? From hydrant A to the end of the cul-de-sac?
Um, well, it could be seven fifty plus six seventy eight.
Seven fifty, where do you get the seven fifty at?
Yeah, the dimensions are up there on the screen.
Oh, seven sixty eight to Bronco Court.
It's about fifteen hundred feet plus.
So it'd be lock down.
It would make sense to me to go with the recommended hydrant D, and then Sean mentioned a. Possible alternative site at the ninety degree on Bronco Court. That makes sense.
Well, I think that D is, but, I mean, potentially a lot further is, it, it's just as far as, as the one that's existing for lot three. I think the one, the, if we're going to add one, it, it would be what Sean is, is proposing. It would be right through the, at the corner of Bronco Court or, or somewhere. On that side of it, it would make a lot shorter run to all of the, the lots.
I guess that's what I'm thinking too, I'm thinking we, instead of putting B and we pull it into that corner and, and it services that whole area.
Yeah, but I'm also considering the vent, event venue. Or hydrant D.
Well, the event venue is a long ways from hydrant D, isn't it?
No, yes, sir.
We're going to make and put in another one at D, we should have been putting it in way up the road further.
And really, if we did, you know, nine hundred feet from that. From lot six, that, the house that's there, if we take that radius off of that, that seems. Would make pretty adequate sense, and then it leaves us with not as long of a trunk line that's sitting there stagnant as well. Um, and wherever that point is, that's where we put it along fifteen eighty.
Is the six inch line running down all the length of fifteen eighty or just Bronco Court or?
It's off of that, it's off of that hydrant, and then from that hydrant, um, Tri-County wanted me to put in a two inch. So, two inch line then runs from there to Bronco Court and around through Bronco Court. So, I would have to tear out that line, the main line that is, that's serviced, currently serviced by Tri-County. I'd have to tear that out and put in a six inch line from wherever that point is.
Put a hydrant on it too.
Like, you can't put a hydrant on a two.
Put a hydrant on a four, or no? It has, there's low, there's low and there's high pressure.
I can't, the, the current standard with Tri-County is to put a hydrant on, you have to have a six inch line. But none of the existing infrastructure there, all, everything like in Snapple bit, that's, that's all was done ahead of time, so that's all four inch. And the same with ridge is all four inch as well. Um, we just upgraded it to a six inch, one's where the standard, but then two, if that line, main line is ever upgraded, then that six will tie, will tie in. Yeah. So, yeah, I think if we went nine hundred feet is what I would suggest from the, the house that's there. At that point, then that covers all of those, all of those lots.
Tim, you comfortable with that?
Engineering doesn't have any reference in the code to fire. Um, I'm okay with it, yeah.
Sean?
I don't want to contradict the fire district, you know, I'm just uh.
That's.
Trying, trying to put some numbers up there to give us an idea. I mean, if you put one at Bronco Court fifteen eighty and they got a nine hundred foot hose. You're kind of reaching the max capacity, you know, at length, I think it's a lot three and lot six, the homes in those parts lots. Because uh, I mean, with the fires on the opposite end, you know, the opposite side. You stretch the hose all the way around the house and do it. I don't know, you know, the most logical place would be sort of the elbow, Bronco Court. With the nine hundred foot hose, you can reach everywhere, but um. That's kind of what I was asking the fire district about. You know, that would just make one, one. You know, that would just make one one item. Isn't the hydrant isn't the main cause though, it's the height to get there, and so I understand that on the developer's side that that's, you know.
The the delocation doesn't really make much sense to me because it's kind of all there all by itself, other than it can service a truck carrying water up to the venue, but. So could a hose coming off of the off the elbow there in in Bronco Court. And if you're gonna have to extend the six inch line. You know, it's a little shorter distance to go into Bronco Court than it is to go down to the corner there. Not a lot, but a little.
Let me chew on this for a second. Anything else? That they should know or discuss before we move forward on this one?
Can we get the clipboard and see who wants to speak in favor or answer? Have anything for the Mr. Bear?
Um, no, I didn't. Really, my only concern was the stewardship area in how that, but I think that that can be developed. As the stewardship plan is fleshed out between ordinary lot and final lot, so. I think, yeah, I can have to work with Sean and or the and or the developer. Just, you know, work on some of that language as as we work through this.
Tim?
You know, further concerns?
Okay.
If you have a lot, it's got any input or any?
Hmm, I don't think we need to do a public hearing on this, do you, Robbie?
No.
So I'll step down and make this motion. For PLN twenty-five zero zero two, the uh Rock Investment Cluster Subdivision. I will move that we approve a. Laminary platte. Uh, with the thirteen. Conditions of approval as noted, including. Uh redesign of fifteen eighty and Testman Roads. Uh, the development of a. Um stewardship plan for the twenty-two acre stewardship area. And I would ask the applicant to um. Redefine or get better stink, but get better handle on the location of fire hydrants and. Where they might be best served for this subdivision.
Do you want to do anything about number thirteen with the crushed asphalt or better? Are you okay with gravel?
I'm okay with gravel and that.
I will uh second the motion, changing that last um number thirteen to. The ability to use gravel. In lieu of crushed asphalt.
John, is that the appropriate motion here?
I I'm confident that Terry will capture.
Eliminate the intent.
Yeah, we could eliminate them.
Yeah.
So for the first twelve conditions of approval.
We're going back to twelve conditions, eliminating thirteen.
Correct. Should should I rewrite condition number six? Uh, fire executive final platte fire hydrant will install in subdivision in accordance with flow and location standards provided by Delta Fire District, sorry, Delta.
I would ask the applicant to. Provide Delta County, Delta Fire District an alternative plan and and see if they will accept that.
Okay, so the condition can stay as is.
There needs to be a fire hydrant, a minimum of one somewhere in there.
Okay.
So I I think then what I would do is reach out to Tri-County and see how much of a trunk line they're comfortable with, if if that makes sense to make sure we s- we stay with our.
Yeah.
You know, that we get their health concern as well.
So it's got to be technical standards too.
Yeah, no.
So you said earlier that the district doesn't, I guess, communicate with private developers?
Right, will not talk to me, no. There's no, the only way he will talk to you, you guys, I guess, is planning. He won't won't talk to to Tri-County or myself. So I I have no way of communicating with him.
I suppose it serves as an intermediary with whatever.
If he could work with the applicant here. Thank you, Sean.
All right.
A little, Tim, sorry, I mean, I'll keep this, but if you leave six in the way it is. The applicant is required to comply with what Delta Fire District requires. And that doesn't seem to be the gist of kind of the conversation that's been going on today.
There I don't see a requirement. I just I see a recommended.
Says fire hydrant shall be installed in subdivision in accordance with the flow and location standards provided by Delta County Fire.
Is that one of the conditions?
Six says, yeah, that's what.
What verbiage would you substitute to, dear?
Ian, no, I'm not, I'm just here to.
You're just here to call a problem for me. It isn't working.
No, I I like clarity, and I think the developer.
They deserve clarity.
Yeah.
And so does Sean and his guys, his staff.
An additional, I mean, yeah, I think you could you could come out with something with hydrant at least one additional hydrant.
Minimum one.
Minimum one.
Yeah, but it's got to meet the technical standards of Tri-County with support for both quality and quantity.
There's a motion out there. I'm not quite sure what it is.
Harry's like, neither am I. Okay, so we do eliminate number thirteen. We modify. We have print twelve. Are we have print twelve conditions removing number thirteen, and you've modified number six. To add one additional hydrant, right?
Minimum rate.
Minimum one additional hydrant, meaning quality and what?
Quality and quantity. For the technical standards of Tri-State.
Tri-County.
Tri-County.
We are asking. You know, planning director to uh work with Delta Fire District.
Two thumbs up. I will second the motion.
Any other discussion on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So done. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
At this point, we are going to recess till one thirty. When planning will resume and we will be picking up PLN twenty-four zero five seven, the Davis uh event venue. Well, good afternoon, everybody. It is August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. This is the Delta County Board of County Commissioners. We're in the planning part of our agenda. Right here this afternoon to hear um the conditional use permit application for the Davis uh venue. Turn this over to uh planning director Sean Gardner.
So the commissioners heard this case on August fifth and sixth table. This hearing or decision. Just to recap and not go through everything, I'll um just review some of the neighbor uh concerns. Some staff findings with regard to those concerns and go over the conditions of approval. This this event venue is in an eight-twenty um zoning district and. As such, this requires limited use for the notice, but. It was elevated to a conditional use permit due to the amount of public input alleging that the event venue. Would have material impacts on the surrounding properties and or public resources. Some of the, just to summarize, some of the um neighbor concerns. A lot of them relate to the road and the traffic on the roads, traffic on J Road. Where the venue would be located. Also, um, the traffic study that was conducted. And the um C dot review that required. Uh, an access permit to be issued off of Highway ninety-two. And the possible closure of westbound J eighty road. Also, other concerns had to do with maybe the hours of operation and related noise. So there are noise concerns and a lot of concerns about the hours of operation extending. Until late night hours that would disrupt the neighbors. Adjacent to the property. And then um there has been expressed concerns about irrigation water that comes under J Road onto the property. And other things like depreciation of property values and. And um also related to the roads, alcohol consumption that could potentially take place at the wedding bin. So regarding these concerns. In in summary, staff in staff's review of this event venue project. Has designed and has conditioned in proposed draft conditions of approval. Meet the applicable standards of the twenty-four land use code. And I'll I'll speak to a couple of um things. In terms of its zoning district intent in eight-twenty zone. An event venue is permitted permissible. The subject property, well, the event venue that's being proposed will take approximately three and a half acres out of agricultural production. For the parking lot, the barn and the grounds along the venue. But there's fourteen and a half acres or fifteen acres approximately that kept in agricultural production. With regard to traffic impacts. C dot has determined that the venue will require C dot access permit off of Highway ninety-two. And so. The permit is conditioned to require a copy of a finalized C dot permit prior to commencing operations. Also, it's um normal. For all these kinds of developments, condition number eight requires approval from the county engineer for access from J Road. With regard to noise mitigation. Uh, as a standard for all event venues or any kind of uh operation. Any noise that is generated by development shall not exceed the thresholds of the state statute for maximum permissible noise levels. Noise levels are not to exceed um. The levels prescribed by that statute uh uh as measured from the property line. And the uh approved site plan for this venue includes trees and berms around the location of the barn to help mitigate some of the noise impact. And the approved business plan, if you get approved, also states that all music will be located inside and will not be permitted outside. Condition uh number five in the drought conditions of approval requires the keeping of a decimal log. And condition ten requires an annual review of that log to monitor monitor compliance. Of course, we have code compliance and take complaints. If they exceed those limits. The PC had added a condition number thirteen. Uh restricting the hours from nine AM to ten PM, but these actually coincide with the hours that were proposed by the applicant, so redundant and. And condition number fifteen. Was added by the planning commission, the requesting that the barn doors be closed after seven PM. But again, all music will be kept inside. And um. I'll leave it up to the commissioners to decide whether that's a. Uh, condition we want to keep or not, but um the noise. Statute from state covers, you know, what's an acceptable level of noise at what hours of day and night. With regard to outdoor lighting, condition number four requires the outdoor lighting should be hooded and shielded. Shielded and so is the not counting light or glare onto adjacent properties or upwards in a manner that the loose night sky will. In addition, um, condition eleven is added. After the PC hearing, requiring a screening along the west side of the parking lot to mitigate headlights shining into the neighbors' homes. As cars would come into the events, the event centers of parking lot. With regard to fire protection, the emergency response. The approved fire emergency plan provides a detailed description of fire prevention and emergency response plans. Developed with the help of Hotchkiss Fire Chief. And condition number twelve was added by the PC to prohibit the use of fireworks at the event venue. Should think that applicants are defined to comply with it. Then with regard to water and wastewater, um Roger Mesa Domestic Water Company has submitted confirmation to planning staff that the event venue. Has domestic water supply, is permitted to use that tap for to service the venue. Irrigation wastewater that comes from under J Road. To the subject property is being diverted around the parking lot to a pond. Has been inspected and approved by the Division of Natural Resources. And condition number seven requires final approval on an engineered onsite wastewater treatment system from Delta County Environment Health. So, I mean, with that, the staff is recommending approval of the project. And um. Public conditions. Do you have any questions? They can answer those or I can go through the draft conditions of approval.
No, we pretty much just walked through those draft conditions. Uh, commissioners, is there any questions for Sean and his staff on? The data provided here today?
I have none.
Okay, um, I'm going to ask the applicant, Mr. Davis, is there any other pertinent information? That has not been covered here that should be included?
I believe everything's been.
Come forward and introduce yourself. Is that microphone on?
Good afternoon, everybody. I believe everything has been hashed and rehashed and rehashed again. And uh, one thing I would want to point out is that. With the opposition that we've had, which I never would have believed ever would have happened with this kind of a uh. Event venue. We never did bother to ask neighbors for support. Uh, since the last meeting, we have uh put a little effort out into talking to the town businesses and neighbors. And uh, as you've seen in our packet, uh. Over twenty people were willing to write letters in support. That uh, if you would believe the opposition uh here today, the whole county is against us. Which is not the case at all. Uh, I just like to point that out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself for the record.
I'm sorry, Ken Davis, uh, three-three-zero-eight-four J Road.
Thank you. Because of the nature of this application and conditional use permit, I'm going to open up another public hearing. Who's got the clipboard right now? But I'm going to ask everybody several several things today. One, we are going to be respectful and civil with one another. Please address the commissioners, not the audience. We have covered a lot of ground on this already. What we're looking for today, thank you. What we're looking for today is any new information or conditions relative to this project that um missionaries should know about. So we don't have to go over the detail that was provided earlier. In a previous hearing today, we started out with those who are in favor of the of the event venue. Uh, that was for the the Hawks up in Crawford. I think we'll follow that same model. So as I call your name, if you are would like to speak on behalf of this in favor. Uh, please come forward to introduce yourself. We'll have three minutes. Lindsay will be uh timing us today. please come forward to introduce yourself. We'll have three minutes. Lindsay will be timing us today and she'll give you a one-minute warning to summarize. Anything else?
Following that, those that are in opposition.
Oh, yes, following that, I'll, we will provide time for those who are in opposition to this application with the same thing. It's, we need to hear new data or new information regarding the project. Please don't go over the stuff that's already been provided. So we'll start. Henry Hoshiko. This is for those who are in favor of them. We'll get back to you then, Mr. Hoshiko. Diane Hoshiko.
Opposition.
Robin Waddams.
Opposition.
Thank you. Grant Hartman, Hartman?
Opposition.
Thank you. Ronnie Teal. Thank you. Enos Ruble.
Opposition.
Melanie Hoshiko. Thank you. Russ Christensen. Liz Heidrick, is she in the room?
Not yet. I signed her in, but she's right coming.
Okay. Marsha Brzonik.
In favor.
Please step forward, introduce yourself.
My name is Marsha Brzonik. I do need my address.
Yeah.
Four-one-one-nine-four Lambert Mesa Drive, Peonia.
Thank you.
I am a realtor, my name again is Marsha Brzonik. I'm a realtor in Peonia in the North Fork, serving all of Delta County. I've been a realtor in this area since two thousand and one. And I have, well, I'm a native of Delta County, so I have a lifelong interest in our community. And I just wanted to stand in support of the Davises. I worked with them in purchasing the property in Hotchkiss. And they were very diligent in doing their homework prior to even making an offer. They went and talked to our county planning department. And a lot of people don't do that. They put the cart before the horse. And they really wanted to make sure that they would be able to buy a property that would meet the needs of what they were wanting to do and that it was also acceptable with, with the county and, and met the planning needs and what the limitations were for the property. So they, they talked to planning, they talked to the water company and, and, you know, again, made all the steps that they needed to do prior to making an offer. Once they purchased the property, they immediately went to planning and started, I think, within the week on, on the planning process. They're kind, caring people. They care about community. I think that personally, and so to speak, what I can offer is a real estate perspective as far as property values. Typically, when a business goes into a, a community that is for like, community gathering purposes, it improves and also adds to the value of properties because they're cared for. Their landscape, they're maintained. They have to for their business. And yes. Oh, okay. So, so, and we've seen in other communities in western Colorado, Montrose has several wedding venues. Palisade has several in Grand Junction. Even Delta County has wedding venues that are maintained and look great and add to the neighborhood. Agrotourism is really, especially in the North Fork, part of our future. As, as we move away from coal mining or, and just that other industry, agritourism has just really stepped in and it's made a really nice difference. And I think that this adds to that agricultural community, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Davis, I know you spoke a minute ago.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll give you opportunity afterwards if there's to correct any misinformation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Melinda Ruble.
Opposition.
Thank you. Is there anybody online? This will be to speak pro on this application.
I'm going to go down the list of people online if there's anybody that would like to speak in approval of this application. I have Lori and Nika Wolf. Yes, sir.
Very good. Then we'll turn to those who are in opposition to this. Henry Hoshiko. Good afternoon.
My name is Henry Hoshiko. I live at three-three-two-zero-seven J eighty Road, Hotchkiss. On August the eighth, I filed a statement of opposition to the Davis Pond. And unfortunately, I got it on the wrong form, so they returned it. But I still think it's valid and I'm considering refiling. So let me read the pertinent parts of this statement. A defect to a water storage right was granted to Ken Davis on three-three-eight-zero-eight-four J Road in Hotchkiss and by Rushkey, Luke Rushkey, a North Fork Water Commissioner. And it's, it's shown in the following email to Brittany Haning, the Delta County Planning Commission. And it partially reads, yes, I protect, respect, inspected the Davis Pond a couple of months ago. There is no concern with the pond. Then he goes on to state and describe the pond itself. And it's, he signed it Luke M. Rushkey, the lead North Fork Water Commissioner. This email gives Mr. Davis an implied water storage right to the irrigation runoff water from Ron Smith's property on the north side of J, J Road. And it's without approval from Mr. Smith. The storage right grants, right granted harms the existing water rights of the water runoff water owner or Mr. Smith. And violates the Colorado Doctrine of Prior Appropriation, which prioritizes, prioritizes water rights based on the first time, first in right principle. And gives the right to Mr. Davis, the right to store Mr. Smith's irrigation runoff water. In addition, if Mr. Smith stored this water over a period of time, he could claim that the right to this water through adverse possession, thereby denying Mr. Smith the right to the water he previously owned and the right to store it in the future if he so desired. For the above reasons, the court is being asked to overrule Water Commissioner Rushkey's approval of Mr. Davis's pond to store the irrigation runoff water from Mr. Smith's property. In addition, it is requested that the court require Mr. Davis to divert the irrigation runoff water around his proposed pond and allow it to drain into the natural drainage course. And basically, I, I am considering refiling this on the proper form. And I'd like to thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Hoshiko. And Mr. Hoshiko, you know, county does not do water court. That is a separate.
Well, then it'll be the, then it'll be the water court that makes the determination.
That's correct.
Does whatever is necessary to correct the century.
Thank you. Diane Hoshiko.
You give me a jam, sorry.
And remember, we're looking for new information or in.
But I don't think you can really tell us what to say, so that's not okay. I've got three minutes. I would just like to ask you about this land use code that says you're supposed to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of Delta County residents and protect the character of existing rural communities and neighborhoods. I was kind of wondering how that's going to do that for me, that venue, because it's not. And I would want to tell you about, last time I told you about what it used to look like before he adulterated that land. Now I want to tell you what it looks like all our neighbors, okay? We all, we try to grow all of our own food and our own fruit. And we try to feed ourselves off our land. It's very fertile land. I love Rogers Mesa. I love it. I love America too. And that land was, it's from a lava flow. And so it has all these minerals in it. And no matter what you grow, it just, it just grows. And so we have all this wonderful land. We don't want it adulterated. We want it to stay the way it was. And I, I don't know what more I can say other than that it's quiet, it's peaceful, we have birds. And our neighbors are all, they all get along. We really like each other. We get along. And I feel really bad about what goes on with Mr. Davis because he, he didn't come in and ask any of us what we thought of it. You know, there's a dog kennel right next to Melanie and Russ. And when they put in that dog kennel, they went to every single neighbor and asked them, you know, before they did it, how would you feel about having a dog kennel in here? He never even asked one person. They snuck it in. And you know that and I know that. So now, I guess the last thing that I'm going to say is that I've been hearing some stories that Patty Davis has had some threats against her life. And that makes me feel really bad because I don't know any of our neighbors that would make any, any kind of a threat. And, and I just, I don't want there to be threats against anyone's life. And, you know, we've got, we've got the, just about every neighbor is a Christian. We've got the LDS family. You know, we've got the Mennonite family. We've got the Baptist family. We've got two Saddle Mountain families. We don't make death threats. I don't want you to think that any of us would do that. So I just want you to know, we have a wonderful neighborhood. We love our neighborhood and we love the land. It's very special to us there. We used to be able to go out and take our horses. And it was quiet and it was nice. We're scared to now. All kinds of weird stuff goes on over there. It's not safe. It's not even safe for me to take my dog out there. And that's the honest truth. Last thing I'm going to say is I have a conservation easement on my forty-two acres. And when I die, if Delta County figures out a way to take my land and adulterate it, I'll come back and I will haunt you.
Robin Waddams.
Wasn't going to be here, but she made it. Janice Cooper.
Did you get her assignments?
I apologize that I'm hard of hearing. And I had something I had to do earlier. Anyway, I'm Janice Cooper and I currently reside in, at eight-six-nine-nine Lynn Avenue in Luzier and seventy-four years old and born and raised on Rogers Mesa. And I'm opposed to the proposal for several reasons, including the hazardous road configuration and the effect this type of venue will have on the neighbors, including an, including an increased need for law enforcement, a history of nefarious and disrespectful behavior by the owner, and the obvious dishonesty in proposing this as an agro business, and the disruption of the local peace for the Hotchkiss Cemetery. I'm on the Hotchkiss Riverside Cemetery Board. The access to this property is not easily transversed from any direction. And even as teenagers, we need to respect this section of road. Growing up, I can remember that the majority of accidents involve people unfamiliar with the difficult turns. It seems foolhardy to have newcomers who are involved, who have been drinking, transverse this road at out all hours. This will eventually end in tragedy for a partygoer, a bride and groom, or the grandmother going to Hotchkiss to pick up her grandchildren after a football game. If people unfamiliar to our area choose to go down J eighty Road to town, there is a particularly hairy set of railroad tracks that will, with a little speed, can throw you into another lane when oncoming traffic can't see you. Many people will be adversely affected by this business, not only, but only one individual will profit. I think it needs strong consideration. And the planning commission should be making a decision based on what's beneficial to all county residents, not just one. I am sure one argument in favor of this proposal will be the increased income for Delta County. However, I wonder if you've weighed the small revenue possibilities against the expensive lives, rural peace, and the increased need for law enforcement in the area. How else is the county going to enforce noise and noise violations, operating hours, and alcohol consumption? We know there have been conflicts and disrespect with previous neighbors of this owner in Montrose. And I think that bears a consideration by this planning commission if they have Delta County residents best interested heart. The owner's disrespect and arrogance is demonstrated by the fact that he applied for a permit in June, but he had been building for months and months prior to that. And one would be led to believe that he would, he could just bulldoze this, his way through the regulation process because he had already spent so much money. Please consider how much money his neighbors have put into their property and preserve their right to enjoy their property and their property values. This is not an agro, agritourism venue in any way. And the only thing this venue does is to take productive fertile land out of agricultural use. It is not an essential business as there are numerous venues and businesses that host weddings in Delta County. Finally, as an active board member, as an active board member for the Hotchkiss Riverside Cemetery, I oppose this venue as it will disrupt the peace and quiet mourners that deserve to say goodbye to their loved ones. Most funerals happen on Saturdays since they, that is when they have the most family members present. Lively music carried down through the valley will no doubt be disruptive and disrespectful to the grieving process. In conclusion, the hazardous road configuration, adverse effect on the neighbors, a history of bad behavior and erroneous presentation of being an agritourism business, and the disruption of the local peace for the Hotchkiss Riverside Cemetery, I believe are all good reasons to deny this permit. You want me to sign this?
Grant Hartman.
Thank you very much. Sorry to be late.
And again, commissioners are looking for new or pertinent data to the project.
Okay. My name is Grant Hartman. I live at three-three-one-three-zero-J eighty Road. And I simply have to disagree with the planning commission on allowing it to even get to this point. How, the man, the application may meet certain criteria from the land use, land use code, but definitely not all. There's, I mean, I submitted this, hopefully you all got a copy of it. But protecting the character of existing rural communities, it's one of the very first things. And, you know, I can go, you guys know the land use code better than I do. But simply, that chapter two, section two, everything applies here about the zoning and if it's not a proper event, it needs to go to a different zoned area. This this giant parking lot in the middle of a rural residential agricultural area is just a black eye. And it is, it just, sorry, again, in my opinion, it does not meet the standard of the land use code.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ronnie Teal.
Good afternoon. Ronnie Teal, one-zero-zero-two-four-thirty-three-hundred Road, Hotchkiss. Understanding that we're bringing just the new facts to you, I'm hoping I can make it. I'd like to re- I'd like to rebuttal as to the event center being in the land use code that was brought up today. I just took a search. There is nothing in there on an event venue in the land use code. There is in Chapter 2, Section E, a special events. Generally, in paragraph 1, "Generally, this section is intended to provide standards for the temporary use of land in all zones." That's temporary, not permanent. "This is special events to avoid significant negative effects." You, one of you had brought up about the plat removal at the last meeting. Did some research on that. That plat removal was unnecessary. The original plat reads, "Lots within the subdivision have been approved for one single-family dwelling, including mobile homes, "if not otherwise restricted, and any further development on any lot "will require the purchase of additional water taps and septic system and utilities, "which must be constructed upon each lot, and said restriction must be removed by formal hearing." That does not say anything about no further development. It just simply says there's a restriction that they had to have a water tap. I'm going to assume here, and this is my assumption, I presented everything else with documents, statutes, and proposals, publications. My assumption is that the applicants chose not to rezone the property because they knew that would require a public hearing. By using the land use code, introducing it as a limited use, and changing that replat, I don't think they expected the opposition that they've received. There's, there was no mention of any further development in that land use code. The reboundary lines was simply a transfer of property from a father to the son, and no exchange of property. Therefore, there was simply no reason to replat that property. I attended the planning board meeting last week. I felt like I was the enemy for fighting against the venue. I have to admit that at times I do feel defeated. However, I'm reminded of words spoken by an Auschwitz concentration camp survivor and a Nobel Peace Prize winner in 1986, Eli Weiselman. He said, "There's times when we're powerless to prevent injustice, "but there must be a time when we fail to, when we never fail to protest." Am I saying that this is the Holocaust? No, I'm not. Is that my one minute? Okay. Am I comparing this to the horrible place in history? No. However, I cannot simply sit by and be silent about something I'm so passionate about. Please do not misunderstand me. I am not talking about violence. I'm utilizing and depending on my elected officials to make the right decision for my family and my community. Please let us keep and maintain our quiet, peaceful neighborhood. Obviously, the influx of traffic, the fact that we are even having to deal with, having to increase lanes, is enough to say 20%. We're increasing from four cars on a road to 48. That's a significant influx. Thank you very much.
Aminas Ruble.
Well, I ain't got much to add. Aminas Ruble. I live on 32932 J Road, straight down on a 90-degree corner. And I know you don't want to hear about the corners and stuff. But I will bring this up. In the late 90s, Ted Hayden was commissioner here. We had this gack same fight about the traffic, and I don't see that the roads really improved that much. And all they were putting in was the school. It wasn't going to be near the traffic that we're looking at with venues. The other thing is, is we're sitting at 54 cars now, is what I understand. The meeting in Hotchkiss, it was 100 cars. Okay, they have, basically, they don't have no limit. They said at the meeting last time, seven days a week, all they can get. Well, you know, that's not fair to the corners, or these people on these corners, and these people right in front of the venue. Some of them work out of town. They come home on the weekends. This is their home. This is their peace. This is their relaxation. Won't come home to listen to bands and parties and all that stuff. I've lived in this town, I was born and raised in Hotchkiss. I think Janice Cooper covered it really well. I think it's a real bad idea, and I'm sorry, I've seen so many changes in this town. It's just, I'm against it.
Thank you. Melanie Hoshiko.
Melanie Hoshiko, 33101 J Road. This is a setting unlike Sprocker Hawk. Lance Enholm could clearly see that after his site visit. It's the wrong location, he said. Land use code, Chapter 1, proves you can deny this application. You have broad authority. For my family alone, the one-acre parking lot so close to our bedroom window is detrimental. The Davises have never acknowledged our concerns about the parking lot noise. Instead, Ken Vivas mocks us by saying, "His venue is not a strip club. It's not a brothel." No one has ever said that. Sites like Realtor.com offer a noise indicator feature, noise like traffic in venues. Why? Because people realize the negative effects. One of the best marketing phrases is to say, "It's quiet and peaceful." A one-acre parking lot with people exiting from a party is not that, and it very much is a party barn. A celebration with music, dancing, and an open bar is a party. And 50 events a year is every single weekend. Kristy Vincent, our buyer's agent at Realtor, recognizes Gary Keller's Top 100 nationwide. Advised us in writing, "The Davis venue is not a positive thing "and will have a negative impact on our property value. "The close proximity and noise is harmful. It makes it harder for us to sell." They could have moved the parking lot. We asked them to. It was a choice, not a neighborly choice. It was a selfish choice. We have given evidence that drunk drivers can't navigate our roads. We don't want to be right. If we are, it will be tragic, and we will know where to look. An accident attorney will know where to look. A traffic study adjusted and based on only 48 cars, yet a one-acre parking lot that the applicant has stated he needs and might fill. What about car shows? I've never seen as many cars come through this valley as during shows. This, too, we hear, is on the applicant's agenda. An attorney would look at how we questioned the open bar plan, the refusal to have a liquor license. And lastly, the applicant's past history of showing poor decision-making skills with a prior accident that happened just outside the venue on J Road. Should Davis be allowed to monitor intoxication levels and capabilities of drivers? Contrary to sentiments the planning department and commission echoed in their work session last week, neighbors' voices should be heard. We, the neighbors, are the immediate community, and isn't the very name of this department, "Community Planning and Development"? Thank you.
Thank you. Russ Christensen.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us again. I was actually kind of just hoping this was just going to be a decision, and, you know, it's been a long process for all of us. And conflict is not my forte in life. I don't think this feels good to anybody. I don't feel good looking at Sean. I don't feel good looking at what has happened here. And, but we, as been mentioned, we're fighting for some rights of our peace and enjoyment in our community and our neighborhood. I'm going to start with two new pieces of information. The first being, if you look at Wisconsin law right now, Wisconsin actually had a movement by the hospitality industry that challenged the "bring your own beer" liquor model. It had very big endorsers. Because it's an illegal competition advantage, liquor license holders are not allowed, the Cork Law was denied in Colorado, to host events where they bring their own alcohol. So the people who are doing the right thing are not allowed to have "bring your own alcohol" models. So you're creating unfair competition. There will be lawsuits, and there will be lobbying in the state if the county doesn't adopt the same standards. Because the lobbyists at the state level to go against these "bring your own" businesses will be the Ritz-Carlton, will be the large, you know, corporate-owned venues. And their goal will be to not lose business to these small venues. So think carefully on your economic development model that their job is not to lose wedding receptions, and they will go after the liquor license angle. So it's a long-term consideration for the plan. The number two thing for me, besides just making you aware of that, that's what I've tried to do all along, is like, "Did you think about this? Did you think about this?" And I'm glad it's being discussed, and we've made progress. The culture is what I'm most disappointed in. To hear the last workshop, I heard that we are whiners, we're complainers, and we're dream killers. And that was a little tough to stomach, but I've handed out my own set of accusations about the readiness of the land use code and the planning commission to be confronted with this. And to be honest with you, Sean, I regret some of the wording that I put on social media around those times, but I think the overall center was not ready. Like, and I think that's played out, right? Like, we didn't know how to handle three wedding venue applications, and we're learning in the process. And I just want to thank you all for your consideration. I know it's been very difficult, and so I'm really just here to thank you, and thank you for listening when it's difficult to listen to people that you're in opposition with. So thank you for letting me be heard, and, you know, I promise to return the same. And regardless of the decision today, I know this community and our neighborhood will live in harmony with Davis's one way or the other, because that's who we are. We're good people and community members, and we need to work together. I think it will be difficult for a lot of people, but just thank you. I didn't have a lot to add, but I owe those words, those sentiments to everybody here. And be proud of Delta County, be proud of our leadership, and be proud of our planning commission in development that has some new challenges ahead of them. You're part of my community. I'm glad you represent us. Thank you.
Is Liz Hydrick here? Melinda Ruble.
I'm Melinda Ruble. I live on 32932 J Road. And so the proposed wedding venue will be just right down the road from us. I know we've been told we can't rehash what we've said before. I don't believe there's one neighbor that is in favor of this, and it's not because we're argumentative people. We're, if I look at each one of you, "How would you like this in your backyard?" And look at, he, Mr. Davis, wants to have as many as 50 events a year. That's close to every weekend, or even once a month is too much to, you have to have that, all that traffic on the weekends. And as my husband had said, we want to relax and be able to enjoy our neighborhood. And constant traffic, that road is so busy anyway, with all of the farmers and the construction businesses, and Bollinger and Queen and the cemetery. It's very, very busy. And Mr. Davis, I have to disagree, that he has not shown kindness to his neighbors. He hasn't talked to any one of us. His wife spreads rumors about us making death threats, and none of that is true. None of us have done that. And I just ask that you would really take into consideration the neighborhood and what we have to deal with if it is put into effect. And thank you for letting us talk.
Thank you. I see that Liz Hydrick has joined us. Liz, would you like to visit with us today about a Davis event venue?
Sure.
You got signed up?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Liz Hydrick, Realtor, 21 years, Cedar Rock Mountain Realty. I come before you today, understanding the emotions that are involved, and one of the greatest concerns is personal property rights. I, and I am very sensitive to that. However, I do want to assure the neighbors of these special event venues that, in fact, I did a lot of research specifically in the Montrose and Grand Junction area, and also in the Norfolk, at several different locations, specifically the big one in Montrose. I spent a lot of time knocking on doors, spoke to neighbors. Most of them did express that initially they had their concerns about the venue, but in fact, that the impact has been less significant than what they thought originally, and with thoughtful consideration and planning and certain rules set into place that they feel very comfortable in their neighborhood. And also, I spoke to realtors specifically about property in those areas, and they expressed that a tasteful venue, if anything, has increased the property values surrounding the venues. And I think that is something that the property owners really need reassurance about, because I am a Realtor. I'm a salesperson. I actually do not represent anyone in particular in this case, but I decided to come to speak to that point. Probably lose some customers today in the future, you know, if in fact there ever was. But the most important thing is that it needs to be thoughtful and considerate, and at the same time, the values are not diminished, in my opinion, based on the information that I have gathered. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Well, at this point, we're going to close the public hearing.
My name is Valerie Stucker. I live at 33188 J Road in Hotchkiss. Mr. Davis had said recently in an interview with the newspaper that he's planning to build the barn, regardless of whether this is approved or not. And I think that most of us, the resistance is against building the barn. I think the barn is cool. The restoration's cool. The resistance is against the party spot, which changes the character of the neighborhood. It is a residential neighborhood, except for Bollinger and Queen that's been there forever, and the dog kennel that I don't even think is in operation any longer. I have to disagree with the realtors that have spoken. I have been a real estate investor since 2000, and a party spot does not increase property value. I have a question about the condition compliance, and the county is setting this up as an honor system condition compliance. They're having the Davises record and monitor their own decibel level and the public intoxication. And I've asked before, and I was given a pretty vague and ambiguous answer, code enforcement is who I will call if there are infractions. How many violations at the annual review is going to be acceptable? Has the county planned what the next steps will be when there's conflict? Has the plant, county planned what the next steps will be when there's conflict? So how many violations until the business would be shut down? And it's still my contention that there are enough venues in the county in appropriate areas with less dense residential and, uh, no cemeteries.
Thank you. Lindsay, is there anybody online that would like to visit in opposition to this project?
Is there anybody online that would like to speak? Yes.
Thank you. At this point, we're going to close the public hearing part of this. We'll ask Mr. Davis to join us again. Is there anything that was brought up today that is incorrect or need more clarification for the commissioners? Do you think we render a decision?
I believe so. Thank you. Um, let's see. Um, the road conditions are the same as they have been for, for as long as the roads have been built. I believe people coming will just, uh, they will drive as they would normally drive. That road down Cemetery Hills is a twenty-five mile an hour road.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, wanted to point that out. Um, it is considered an agribusiness. We're only taking three and a half acres out of the acreage to build this venue. Uh, they're still being farmed by Zach Hotchkiss. Um, this barn, when done, and the venue, when done, will look like it's always belonged there. It'll look like an old farm. The parking lot will be obscured as best we can, so it won't even be visible. I'm sure there, you'll be able to see some of it. Um, we have offered, uh, the, uh, future business as a gathering place to Hotchkiss, uh, like the, uh, fire department. We haven't approached the police department yet, but, um, they will also have use of the barn for their gatherings and any community gatherings that they would like to have. Uh, we have followed all the requirements set forth. We've tried to do our due diligence and, uh, address all concerns that were put forth. Uh, we have reviewed the liquor laws and we will be complying with all the liquor laws. Uh, the increase in traffic and noise will only be occasional. There's no guarantee. We'll even have more than a handful of weddings. We have no idea how many. We're hoping for as many as, uh, fifty a year. We'll see. Uh, but the hours that there will be music shouldn't interfere with any funerals. Usually the weddings happen midday and the music would, uh, start in the later afternoon. Um, let's see, um, there are several neighbors, including one of our, um, uh, neighbors, uh, just to the direct east of us that have voiced their support. Uh, they are neighboring, uh, property right next door. Uh, there are several others that have stopped by and expressed their support and also supplied us with, uh, letters of support that we have submitted. Um, there has been a threat to my wife. We have, uh, gone to the sheriff and it has been recorded. Uh, so that is, it has happened. I just wanted to point that out. Uh, the noise and dust are happening right now because we are in the building process. Uh, all that will quiet down later. So I just wanted to point these things out that, uh, as people spoke, I wanted to address them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Commissioners, is there any other questions for staff? Um, and on the potential draft conditions of approval?
I have none.
I do think what Sean recommended for redundancy and not needed on the draft conditions uh, makes very much sense. This includes thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. Any discussion on that, gentlemen?
Um, number fourteen with the intoxicated impaired guests. Um, I guess I'm having a hard time figuring out how the, how they're going to police that if they...
That's a state function and not a county function.
So.
Do you have, um, the conditions on the screen, too?
We've got it printed here. Thank you, Brittany.
You have the addition of, addition number seventeen in your list, right?
Yes, yes. That kind of replaces all those.
Yeah.
So any other questions on the proposed conditions of approval if we remove thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen? As recommended by staff?
You're aware of all of these, Mr. Davis, obviously, right? So. I have no further, uh, questions.
Okay. As I've been thinking about this one, this one's a hard one. This is even harder than some of the other ones we've had lately. Mr. Davis, you have brought what you left in Montrose County to Delta County. The additional traffic and busyness and noise and, um, distraction that you guys said you left Montrose from. And you brought it into a small residential, uh, rural neighborhood. If this comes up for a vote, I will be a may vote on this one. This is an inappropriate location for a, uh, an event venue like this. It's too small. It's too close to neighbors. This will be, um, a significant lifestyle, um, distraction and disruption for your neighbors. If this does get approved, and I don't know which way commissioners are going to vote on this, but I am going to highly recommend that you go out of your way to work with your neighbors to make this as least intrusive as you guys possibly can. Somebody mentioned we wouldn't want this as close to our bedroom window as it is to theirs. And I agree with that statement. Um, fifty events, that's one a weekend, is an awful lot for a very small residential rural neighborhood like you guys now live in. So I've said my piece. What is the will of the board?
Uh, John, do we need to do this by resolution? No?
No.
Yeah, you would direct staff, similar to the others. You would direct staff to...
Oh, it's wrong. Go ahead.
Yeah. Why move that we approve a conditional use permit for an event venue? Uh, project number PLN-two-four-dash-zero-five-seven-Davis for their conditional use permit and direct staff to, uh, and you said the resolution is in packet. Okay. Okay.
It needs modified now to...
Okay. That was my question, yeah. And to modify the resolution that's in our packet to delete thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen.
Got a motion on the floor? Commissioner Fuller?
Well, like Wendell suggested, this has got to be the hardest one we've done so far. There's just so many moving parts here. There's so many things to consider. Um, we've been part of a lot of these discussions. We've been, um, talking to various individuals on and off throughout all this on our own. And I, I just keep falling back to this, uh, private property issue. Uh, the NIMBYs and the banana mentalities that we have. And I understand that section of it, I really do. But I keep coming back to, well, you know, this is my property. I ought to be able to do it as long as I follow the recommendations that are set before me. And I cross all my Ts and I dot all my Is. And this, this will come back up for a review in the future. We will have opportunities in the future to tweak this as needed, to make changes as needed. But today, for today's purposes, I will second Mr. Lane's motion.
We got a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion here, commissioners?
Our decision. It's not easy.
I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving PLN-twenty-four-zero-five-seven-Davis event venue, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Nay. It passes. So staff, would you please draft that resolution?
Yes.
Mr. and Mrs. Davis, I hope that you take my words very seriously.
Definitely.
Okay. We are adjourned.